Time we're gonna get ready to get started. If everybody could just silence their cell phones, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Okay, good afternoon and welcome to the first public hearing of the Avenir Community Advisory Committee. My name is Matthew Tai and I serve as the Chair of this committee and have been appointed by Assembly Member Tony Simone. By law, the committee consists of members appointed by specific elected officials who represent the proposed community site. Other committee members joining me today include Nabilah Malik, appointed by Mayor Eric Adams, Angel Vasquez, appointed by Governor Kathy Hochul, Richard Godfrey, appointed by Senator Brad Hoilman Siegel, Madeline McGory, appointed by Borough President Mark Levine, and Quentin Haubrana, appointed by New York City Council Member Eric Botcher.
Yeah, thank you so much. Our team is working on that, but we need to continue with our hearing. Thank you.
Some folks can move closer. I think the sound is better up front.
Thank you for your, thank you for your feedback. We are working on it internally and we will do our best to speak up. Thank you. There are seats in the front if you need to move forward.
So this committee is statutory charged with reviewing the Avenir New York City application. To achieve this, each member of the committee has been reviewing the application. So today, we are receiving public comments regarding the Avenir. The gaming facility location board established September 30th, 2025, as the date by which a vote must be conducted as to whether the project should be advanced to the gaming facility location board. So we're now inviting the Avenir to begin their presentation. I think I switch the sound.
Okay, is this loud enough for everybody? That I can't help you with, I apologize. Good afternoon. First, we'd like to thank everybody here today for taking the time and making the effort to invest in this process. I know we all have much to do in our lives and we deeply appreciate you taking this on. I'm Lisa Silverstein, the CEO of Silverstein Properties. We're a family-owned business founded by my father 68 years ago in 1957. I've had the privilege and the blessing to work beside my father for approximately 30 years. Our portfolio is national, both commercial and residential, as well as hotels and retail. We revitalized Lower Manhattan through rebuilding the World Trade Center, making it safer and the largest walk-to-work population in America. Our focus as a firm has been to improve communities through our planned developments and hospitality arm, creating thriving environments for people to live and work. We have a deep bench of experience dealing with both the public and private sectors and understand the complexities of competing interests. We have residential assets across the United States, developing and investing an average of three to four multifamily projects per year, each having 300 to 500 apartments. I mention this as we're committed to providing 2,000 apartments with 25% being affordable, that's 500, should we be awarded the license for the casino. We know this is a need for the city and we have the ability to provide this through our ongoing programmatic pipeline. We recently acquired and converted two office buildings in Manhattan to rental housing. The most recent was 55 Broad Street, the old Goldman Sachs headquarters, which now has 571 apartments, 25% being affordable, that's 143 apartments. Specific to the area relevant to the Avenir, across the street from the site, we purchased land subsequently investing in that community, creating housing for over 2,300 families. Over 4,000 people now live there, 70 of whom remain our tenants for 25 years. Having so many tenants remain for so long says something about our relationship with this community and our ability to manage large-scale projects and serve our tenants well. We are so heavily invested here, we would never do anything to negatively impact our tenants. This is a community we care deeply about. I personally got involved in designing and developing the three rental towers in this area where we created a public park to have green space, a playground, and a dog park as it was very important for people to feel happy living here as we embarked on transforming this neighborhood. We recently hosted a large-scale barbecue for our residents in the park for the Avenir project to be available to our community with any questions as we want to be inclusive and accessible. Over 700 people attended, including people from nearby properties. Our site is fully zoned and shovel-ready. There is no converting, tearing down, rezoning, or moving tenants around that's required. It's an empty lot in a low-density area. This area of the West Side needs the economic driver to further transform this neighborhood, activating it with more vibrant life and commerce, all which brings more safety. And as a byproduct, also creating demand for a potential subway entrance at 10th Avenue and 41st Street. This would knit the fabric of the community to the rest of Manhattan and allow for a better quality of life for all residents. The subway lines sit right beneath the pavement at 10th Avenue and 41st Street. The MTA previously considered opening a station here, but due to lack of capital and demand, it was never opened. We believe the Avenir would present the best chance of getting the MTA to deliver a subway station in that location and would be the best amenity in the area. We were able to get the MTA to provide a subway station at 30 Park Place in Tribeca and we hope to be change-makers once again, bettering a community. Manhattan makes sense for the Avenir as we get over 65 million tourists in New York per year, making it number one in the country for tourism. The vast majority coming to Manhattan to enjoy entertainment, restaurants, retail, and cultural experiences. Our focus is on bringing those tourists rather than local New Yorkers, but of course, New York would benefit greatly. We're in the best location for tourism, being near the cruise ship terminal, the Port Authority bus terminal, the ferry terminal, and Broadway without disrupting the fabric of that already congested area. The Avenir will create an ecosystem for the West Side with a high-quality venue offering a variety of what's missing while increasing the chances of greater connectivity for all of New York. This convention center where we're sitting today, this convention center alone would greatly benefit from this venue and the West Side would be exponentially enhanced by all the activity. It will be filled in appropriately, creating a gateway for industry and other businesses which lacks here. It's contained yet impactful. Regarding our nearby site, I always felt that specific lot spoke to commercial and entertainment as this convention center anchors the corridor, sitting just across the street from the site like a compass without a needle. Nearly all convention centers have the supportive infrastructure of amenities, at the least a hotel. This is known to be the greatest city in the world with the most energy, yet our convention center has nothing right here. Our complex would bring a large-scale hotel, many restaurants, and entertainment for the overflow of people that come to conventions here. It's actually a bit shady at night. You have the bus terminal on one side, a bus ramp being constructed next door, a large FedEx facility where trucks are stored, and the West Side rail yards. The Avenir will produce 4,000 union construction jobs and 5,000 permanent jobs. We are one of the most diverse real estate companies in which we take tremendous pride. This is a woman-led firm, as which you can see, with women leadership positions along with exceptional male leaders representing a very diverse group. Yet we maintain the same work ethic and goals to improve the quality of life in areas of transition. We feel, I personally feel, a responsibility to New York where it all began for my family and our firm. Supporting local businesses in our community and those that need opportunity make New York a better place to live. We feel the Avenir will provide another iconic legacy project, creating improvement in an area that actually needs it, which is what our focus is. I'm gonna pause here and hand the baton over to my Chief Operating Officer, Dino Fusco. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. I'd like to take a moment to outline the agenda for today's prepared remarks. The Community Advisory Committee asked us to cover four topics. These include: Public access and circulation at the Avenir's ground floor, our traffic mitigation plan, our proposed free shuttle bus plan, and our public safety and security plan. For anyone here who'd like to ask any of us questions about the Avenir, we've reserved the room directly next door. Come by and ask anyone from Silverstein, Rush Street, or Greenwood Gaming, any questions you have about the project. We've also opened an Avenir showroom, which is located at the base of Silver Towers directly across the street from the site. That showroom is open and staffed seven days a week, so come on by, ask us questions, and we'll be happy to answer any thoughts or concerns you may have, as we've been doing now for the past several years. Before I hand over the presentation to cover that first topic for today's meeting, I want to summarize the key aspects of the Avenir, several of which Lisa mentioned because the project has evolved so significantly over the past three years as we have met with and collected feedback from so many members of the community. Understanding these key aspects will be important to having some context for the four topics that the CAC asked us to cover today. The site is located on 11th Avenue between 40th and 41st Street. It's a site that we've owned and tried to develop for over a decade. If we are awarded a casino license, the Avenir will include the following. First, a large community art gallery located at the ground floor along 11th Avenue, which is a space we added to the project because the community asked for that type of space. Secondly, we'll include a 1,000-room Hyatt Hotel with many meeting rooms and event spaces, a rooftop pool with city views, and a wellness and spa facility. Many residents told us they wanted a higher-end, full-service hotel in the neighborhood. And as Lisa mentioned, this Javits Center would benefit significantly from having one as well. The Avenir would have more than a dozen restaurants with various price points, including restaurants from New York City, food industry stars Danny Meyer and Steven Starr, as well as a 700-seat food court that would feature restaurants from local restaurateurs who would be able to expand their businesses by having a location in our property. That food hall was added specifically at the request of business owners and community members because they missed Gotham West Market Food Hall that closed last year after being in business for over 11 years. Importantly, the Avenir would only, sorry, importantly, the casino portion of the Avenir would only represent approximately 12% of the entire complex. Next, we would partner with Union Square Hospitality Group's Hospitality Quotient Team, which would regularly train all 5,000 permanent employees in the Avenir's hotel, restaurants, casino, and management office so that we can ensure that these 5,000 jobs become long-term careers. The Avenir would also provide significant funding and support to many community organizations and causes that the neighborhood cares deeply about. And we would create a capital fund to be allocated to important neighborhood causes and initiatives at the community board's discretion. Next, we would supply space for Rethink Food, which is a non-for-profit organization that will take any excess food from the Avenir's hotel and restaurants and package that food into healthy meals that will be delivered to residents in the community who are food insecure. And importantly, we've significantly increased the number of housing units that we would deliver if we were awarded a casino license. As you heard, we're now committing to delivering 2,000 new residential units, including 25% of which, or 500 units, which would be permanently affordable. The residential units would all be located within or immediately adjacent to Community Board Four and Council Member Eric Botcher's districts. This significant increase in housing was a direct result of the feedback we received from the local elected officials and members of CB4. And as you can see from this slide, we've already begun to study that district and we've identified many opportunities that we are actively pursuing. We are confident that we will be able to deliver on our housing commitment because of our recent experience as well as our very long history building residential properties, as Lisa mentioned in her remarks. And we'll work with the CAC to create a mechanism to ensure that we deliver on this commitment. Finally, we've received very strong feedback that residents in the community want a subway station built on 41st Street and 10th Avenue, which is a project that had already been previously considered by the MTA at a cost of approximately $2 billion. This news article may remind many of you of that topic. The article had a photo that includes many of your elected officials rallying in support for that project. Therefore, there's clearly high support from them for this subway station. Because the Avenir is projected to generate more than $3 billion in direct revenue to the MTA within the first 10 years and an additional $4 billion of potentially bondable tax revenue for the city and the state over that same period of time, and because obviously the Avenir would increase subway revenue through increased ridership, we believe that the best chance of getting the MTA to deliver a subway station at 41st and 10th Street, let me repeat that, we believe that the best chance of getting the MTA to deliver a subway station at 41st and 10th is by building the Avenir. And with that, I'd like to turn over the mic to our project architect, Nancy Ruddy, to cover the next topic, or the first topic that the CAC asked us to cover today. And again, if anyone has questions anytime today, I'll be right next door, wearing this button that says, "Ask me about the Avenir." Many of us will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Dino. Much taller than I am. Thank you, Dino, and it's a pleasure to see you all again today in the CIC and I'm really delighted to see so many people from the community. I'm Nancy. I'm Nancy. Can you hear me now? I sound like a Verizon commercial. I'm Nancy Ruddy, co-founding partner of Setra Ruddy Architecture. Like Silverstein Properties, we are a New York, women-led business. For over 38 years, my partner John Setra and I have been creating community, homes, and a vibrant New York City through community collaboration and design excellence. Our first meeting with the CIC was broader in nature. Today, we have been asked to discuss public access and site circulation. Our design was originally based on creating inspiring architecture that is sculpted at grade to create a safe and secure environment for visitors and residents. Since we last met, we've been working with the city, with the community, to implement most of the comments that the CIC made, all of the comments, let me say. On this next map, you'll see a connectivity diagram. Our site is uniquely located at the crossroads of many neighborhoods that are existing and vibrant but are currently not connected. The Avenir will knit together the fabric of this part of the Far West Side. The circles on this diagram indicate five, 10, and 15-minute pedestrian walks from our site. As you can see, the Avenir will connect and support important local West Side hubs, including the Javits Center where we are today, the Theater District, Madison Square Garden, existing residential neighborhoods, Hudson Yards parks, and all of the venues along the Hudson River. This ground floor diagram shows our property. New York, as we all know, is a walkable, pedestrian-oriented city where residents and visitors experience the magic of our city's streets. Our building, and particularly the ground floor, continue this pedestrian-centric concept. Our ground floor plan, the location of access points and outdoor spaces, provide continuity with the city and activation at our site at all times of the day. The building occupies a full New York City block. To create safe and inviting outdoor opportunities, the building's organic form sets back from our property line, resulting in widened sidewalks and open spaces to allow for ease of pedestrian access, social gathering, and safe and secure circulation around the site. Based on our conversations with the CAC and the community, continuous pedestrian sidewalks are now provided on all four sides of the building. Most of the sidewalks exceed well beyond the mandatory city requirement with dimensions of width from 15 to 35 feet. This will allow for not only access to the building, but for those in the local communities walking dogs, having strollers, adequate space for enjoying the space around the Avenir. The primary hotel and casino entrances on 41st Street are accessed by a landscaped pedestrian plaza that provides a gracious entrance with adequate space for people entering the building while also promoting visibility and indoor-outdoor connectivity. There will be no blank, dark walls on this project on all four sides of the building. We have added to our project a new solution that includes a covered port cochere within our property on 41st Street at the major hotel and casino entrances. This allows for drop-off by cars, shuttles, and for hire vehicles off of 41st Street so as not to impede the existing flow of traffic. Vehicles will exit our port cochere and head back west onto 41st Street, keeping all vehicles related to the casino and the Avenir off neighborhood streets. We believe this is a great improved solution. The community gallery that has been mentioned before runs the entire block front of 11th Avenue and turns onto both 40th and 41st Street. It will house the community gallery, which is a 42-foot-high, multi-functional space designed with flexibility for art, educational use, and varied community activities and events. We expect that the community will help Silverstein Properties develop the program for this space. The three facades of this space will have full transparency and will allow pedestrians and passers in passing cars to enjoy the changing art exhibits of local and emerging artists. Within this space, there will also be a food and beverage outlet and the ability for retail related to exhibits and events. In our last CAC meeting, Quentin, you asked about incorporating retail into the 11th Avenue facade. We did review this option, but we do believe that the 24/7 activity of the gallery achieves the same goals of activation, vitality, and security. However, we are happy to discuss this further with you. At the suggestion of Nabilah and the CAC, we added a second entrance at 41st and 11th Avenue to the community gallery, which will become its main entrance. This change has created an entrance that is closest to the adjacent residential neighborhood. Thank you for this great idea and we're showing it here for the first time. The entrance is well-lit, protected from the elements, and faces out onto an open plaza that is welcoming, provides easy access to the public, and gives optimum visibility and security to the gallery entrance. The original entrance to the gallery on 40th and 11th Avenue will be kept to provide efficient user circulation and vertical access through the building. Two glass elevators allow for access to the food hall and other public areas in the building without going through the casino. And I'll use what Dino says, and I say again, there are two elevators that will allow people in the community and their children to enter the building and take advantage of all of the public spaces within the building without going through the casino. I'd like to thank the CAC and the community for your comments and recommendations and we look forward to further collaboration. Now, I'm pleased to introduce Connor Lasefield, the Avenir's environmental consultant.
Thank you, Nancy. I'm Connor Lasefield and I'm a Vice President at AKRF, the environmental planning firm preparing the environmental impact statement for the Avenir. I'm here to speak about the traffic mitigation plan and the free shuttle plan for the project. But before I get to that, I want to provide some background on the assessment and review that has been conducted so far. As you probably know, we have completed a comprehensive draft environmental impact statement that is now in public review. This document was prepared with public input. In particular, the community board submitted 125 comments on the scope of work and I'm pleased to say that for about 100 of these comments, we were able to address their concerns in the EIS or in other studies to be done outside. in the EIS or in other studies to be done outside the EIS process. The EIS finds that the Avenue would not create significant adverse impacts in 19 of the 22 technical areas that it analyzes. For those where potential impacts were identified, the EIS has put forward potential mitigation measures for public review and comment. So with that overview, I'd like to speak in more detail about traffic conditions and the traffic mitigation plan. I want to start by talking about how visitors will get to the Avenue. Many visitors will travel on foot or by transit with 16 subway lines, 10 local bus lines, and five ferry routes within a 15-minute walk, as well as regional and intercity buses at the Port Authority Bus Terminal and Long Island Railroad and New Jersey Transit at Penn Station, as well as Metro North Railroad at Penn Station when the Penn Station Access Project is completed. Despite all those options, we understand that some visitors will choose to travel by vehicles to come to the Avenue. I want to put the Avenue's vehicle trips in context with the current state of traffic in the surrounding area. The site is located close by major regional and crosstown roadways such as the West Side Highway, the Lincoln Tunnel, and 42nd Street, which helps minimize circulation on local streets. Because of the proximity to major roadways, this area already sees high volumes of traffic, especially during weekday commuter peak hours. So for example, in the map on the right of this slide, in the area right around the project site within the arrows, roughly the West Side Highway to 9th Avenue, 40th to 43rd Street, there are almost 20,000 vehicle trips in and out of this area during the weekday PM commuter peak hour. The intersections in this area would be the most affected by the Avenue. But even here, the Avenue's vehicle trips would be a very minimal addition to the neighborhood traffic, only about 2% of the total trips. Beyond this area, roadways and intersections would be less affected as the Avenue's traffic is further dispersed through the broader roadway network. Another key factor is when these trips arrive and depart. The Avenue's trips would be more evenly spread throughout the day than other types of uses. For example, an office building has a much more pronounced and very directional peak activity, which means that everyone arrives in the morning and everyone leaves in the evening, while the gaming facility is more evenly distributed, which avoids overloading roadways and transit, especially during the busiest times of the day. With that context, I want to talk specifically about the strategies that have been developed to mitigate traffic congestion. First, the site circulation is designed to keep traffic moving around the site. To begin with, there is very limited parking, which discourages vehicle trips to the site. The building has also been designed with a driveway and port-cochere that brings traffic into the site for pickups and drop-offs and maintains traffic flow on 41st Street. Along 40th Street, the loading dock has been designed to support head-in and head-out operations, and it includes queuing space for trucks inside the dock. This ensures that trucks don't impede traffic on 40th Street or on the sidewalk. Another strategy is the operation of a free shuttle service that would connect the Avenue with key transit hubs in Midtown. I want to note here that one of the topics the CAC had asked us to address at this meeting was where the shuttles would pick up and drop off and where they would be stored. We've tried to answer that question here. These routes show the anticipated shuttle stops. And in terms of storage, we anticipate that shuttles on these routes would operate 24 hours a day, and any backup shuttles would be stored onsite at the Avenue or in a nearby garage and not on the street. We think the shuttle would operate on two routes, one with stops along 42nd Street to Grand Central, and another south to Hudson Yards and Penn Station. Shuttles could run along each route every 30 minutes, and for visitors coming to the Avenue who arrive at Penn Station or Grand Central, they could catch the shuttle and get to the Avenue in about 15 minutes. The shuttles would provide capacity for almost 8,000 visitors to and from the Avenue each day, and would promote transit use and reduce the number of vehicles coming to the site by providing a convenient and free alternative for visitors. Another element of the traffic mitigation plan is the traffic engineering improvements that we've identified through the environmental review. As part of the EIS, we prepared a detailed traffic study that identified six intersections that would experience increased congestion during one or more of the peak hours. The study also identifies mitigation measures at each of these intersections to address the increased congestion. These measures include signal timing changes and the reconfiguration of an intersection approach, which are typical traffic engineering improvements that can improve traffic flow. With these improvements, there would only be two intersections where the impacts could not be fully mitigated, at 11th Avenue and 42nd Street, and at 10th Avenue and 42nd Street. And even at these intersections, the increase in delay for a driver would be small, only 15 to 20 seconds during the affected peak hour. So to wrap up, this slide shows comparison snapshots of traffic conditions in the area today and with the Avenue in operation. These snapshots are presented for the weekday PM peak hour across the top, which is the busiest peak hour for the neighborhood, and for the Saturday evening peak hour on the bottom, which is the busiest peak hour for the Avenue. What I want to point out in both of these comparisons is that with the Avenue in place, the intersections will operate very similarly to how they do today. And that's because the Avenue does not operate like an event or an office building with peaking arrivals and departures. Instead, trips are spread more evenly throughout the day, and the busiest arrival and departure times at the Avenue would not coincide with peak rush hour travel times. Finally, this slide summarizes the three key elements of the Avenue's traffic mitigation plan that I covered in this presentation. With this plan, the Avenue can fit into the neighborhood and activate this site without bringing a noticeable change to the overall levels of traffic and congestion in the area. And with that, I'd like to hand it over to Bill DiCanto to discuss the Avenue's security plan.
Thanks, Connor. I am the longtime head of operations and security at Silverstein Properties. Two days ago, I celebrated my 38th anniversary with the company. So I've been working in this neighborhood since 1987. I was part of the design, construction, and security teams for both River Place and Silver Towers, so I'm extremely familiar with the neighborhood, how it's changed, its challenges, and its needs. For me, life, safety, and security are paramount to all other issues. In the redevelopment of the World Trade Center, I was part of the team that developed the protective design standards for the new buildings. I'm responsible for developing, implementing security policies, procedures, and protocols at the World Trade Center and all other Silverstein properties. As long-term stakeholders in the neighborhood, we recognize the community's concerns about crime, safety, and quality of life. We know that there's a real need for more security officers in the neighborhood. Our priority is ensuring that the Avenue is safe and that we improve public safety for our west-side neighbors. To accomplish this, we've developed a comprehensive five-point security plan. Number one, establishing a dedicated NYPD casino outpost. We will build a police substation at the Avenue available for staffing by on-duty NYPD officers. The outpost will enable rapid response to incidents and serve as a visible deterrent to crime. Paid, detailed, off-duty, uniformed police officers will also be stationed at the Avenue to reinforce the regular on-duty NYPD presence. This will provide privately-funded supplemental law enforcement to complement the city's resources. Two, security and onsite EMTs. The Avenue will have 300 security professionals with 30 dedicated to 24/7 outdoor patrol of the property. These professionals will also be trained to respond to mental health-related safety incidents. To reduce strain on local emergency systems and minimize neighborhood ambulance runs, the Avenue will include onsite EMTs and a dedicated space to deliver first aid. We will work with the NYPD, Port Authority, and MTA Police Departments on information sharing, drills and training exercises, anti-human trafficking efforts, and crime prevention strategies. Three, fund a bid safety ambassador program. We will provide funding for the Hudson Yards Hell's Kitchen Alliance to expand its public safety program, placing trained security personnel on neighborhood streets. Licensed security professionals will patrol the neighborhood sidewalks, monitor quality of life issues, assist the public, and act as a deterrent to street crime. Four, smart surveillance and emergency communications infrastructure. Most of the far west side is covered with hundreds of public and private security cameras, with only a few remaining hotspots lacking video visibility. We will fill these critical gaps, identifying areas to strategically install additional cameras, and pay to upgrade street lighting for improved visibility, another deterrent to crime. We will operate a camera-sharing program that provides law enforcement with secure access to existing feeds through voluntary partnerships with local property and business We will modernize another legacy system, emergency call boxes. While most have been phased out, new linked New York City kiosks have been successfully deployed in the city. Five, community outreach and crime prevention programs. The Avenue plans to invest in several community-based safety and outreach programs with an emphasis on homeless outreach and mental health intervention. We've partnered with local nonprofits and civic organizations to support vulnerable youth and prevent human trafficking. I have done this personally for 10 years with Covenant House. These initiatives are modeled on programs we already operate successfully at River Place and Silver Towers. Regular coordination with NYPD and social service agencies ensures tailored, humane responses to both public safety and quality of life concerns. The Avenue represents an opportunity to dramatically enhance public safety in this neighborhood. Our plan offers a layered and proactive approach to crime prevention by combining additional security resources and staffing, technology, and partnerships to prevent crime and enhance public safety. We believe our program will ensure this neighborhood not only becomes more vibrant, but demonstrably safer for all. And with that, I'd like to now introduce my colleague, Tim Drakeoff, from Game Street, Rush Street.
Okay, thank you all for coming out. I'm excited to be here today and share with you how our track record of engaging with communities matches well with this unique project. We develop, own, and operate destination casinos in the U.S. that by design are not in Las Vegas and Atlantic City and don't have flashing neon lights. We focus on opening casinos in major cities with minimal disruption. We have properties today in Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, outside Chicago, Virginia, and New York's capital region. We've never acquired a casino, we developed them from scratch, and we've been the first casino in each one of our host cities. We'll bring that specialized experience to the far west side. It's common for our neighbors to have questions about a new casino. We understand the concerns, and we can address them. First, public safety. We always prioritize safety. The misconception that casinos attract crime is based on old-world Vegas and the movies. Today, single-property casino developments actually make communities safer. Independent research verifies this. A nonprofit think tank did a report that found while population increased in Fishtown, which is our neighborhood in Philadelphia, crime decreased by 20% in the five years after we opened the casino. Here are what public officials in a couple of our other locations say about our facilities. Pittsburgh Police Commander Sean Malloy. Rivers Casino Pittsburgh has a trusted relationship with Pittsburgh PD, and there has been no significant negative impact on public safety resources. Mayor Gary McCarthy in Schenectady. We have not had any increase in crime or other activities that are sometimes negatively associated with casinos or gambling houses. Traffic? Casinos do not have a start and end time like a sporting event, nor do casinos stress peak rush hour times. As Connor noted, our business plan is to have the majority of our guests arrive by public transportation and via free shuttles to and from major transit hubs. The free shuttles will also be available to local residents. We take problem gaming seriously. We have a robust and fulsome problem gaming mitigation program that includes funding to provide resources and a strict self-exclusion plan. We will drive economic activity to local businesses. We reach out to local businesses, we educate them on our opportunities and how to deal with gaming licensing and regulation. We will bring 5,000 jobs to the west side. Not just jobs, but career opportunities with no experience necessary. We will train you. Our last speaker, Dawn, our chief human resources officer, will have more on that in a second. But I want to share one final thing about our casino in upstate New York. We had meetings like this, we made promises. Now, more than 10 years later, I can say that we did what we said we were going to do, and we earned the community's support and trust. Mayor McCarthy sums it up. The casino in Schenectady has been a tremendous success. There was some apprehension of community members when it was first proposed. All the apprehension and negative assumptions have not happened. It has been a vital and key component in the economic resurgence within the city of Schenectady. We collaborated and transparently engaged with this community, delivered on our promises, and earned their trust. We're proud of that track record. Now, I'll hand it to Dawn.
Thank you, Tim. My name is Dawn Reynolds-Pettit. I am the chief human resources officer with Rush Street Gaming and Rivers Casino. I'm also the daughter and granddaughter of steelworkers. And as a member of a proud union family growing up, I was taught you work hard, you give back to the community, you leave things better than you find it, and you support others. I was also the first one in my family to pursue higher education after high school. And as I approached college graduation, I needed to figure out a career path. Casinos were new to my area, taking their place amongst mostly a blue-collar landscape. I knew very little about casinos, and uncertainty certainly brought apprehension and fear. So I decided to head my career path in a completely different direction. But the gaming industry kept calling for me, and after much soul-searching, I decided to give it one year. What I found beyond those casino doors my first day of employment would not only surprise me, but it would be the start of a 25-plus-years-career in gaming. For what I found was that the gaming and casino environment had something for everyone, whether your career was just starting, winding up, winding down, at a crossroads, a stopover, or a detour. There were the jobs that you would necessarily think would be in a casino like hospitality and gaming, but there were also jobs in IT, accounting, finance, human resources, marketing, facilities, security, and food and beverage, just to name a few. And the more I learned about the gaming industry, the more I came to not only appreciate it, I came to love it. For me, it was not just a job, it became a career. Three years ago, I was fortunate enough to join Rush Street Gaming and Rivers Casino. And what drew me to this company specifically was their commitment to creating healthy, thriving communities through volunteerism and charitable support, pathways to quality jobs and career development, and supporting those making a difference, such as our veterans and first responders. These are the pillars that I grew up leaning against and the ones that Rivers and Rush Street have brought to life. On September 17th of this year, we will once again host Rivers Gives Day of Service, where all of our team members will give back to their communities. And this is in addition to the thousands of volunteer hours and charitable donations made yearly. So what makes Rivers Casino a top places to work in Chicago, and Pittsburgh, and Philadelphia, and Virginia, and upstate New York? And what would that mean for here in New York City? Let's start with 5,000 jobs and a median wage of $50 per hour. Wherever you want your career to take it, we are here for. If you... If you like working with people, we will train you for the rest. You don't have to leave the building to continue to develop your skills, have new jobs, explore what there is to offer you as you develop your career. Our paid training and development programs have resulted in nearly 500 promotions and 700 job transfers within the year alone. We look forward to growing our solid working relationship with the Hotel and Gaming Trade Council here in Manhattan. And we are very proud of our diverse workforce throughout our company, brought to life by our diversity and inclusion commitment to our team members, our business partners, and our community. More than 60% of our workforce has been with us for at least two years, and one out of every four of our team members are a day-waner, meaning they were there the day their respective casinos first opened the doors. In addition to training and development, we offer top-level benefits, health, life, dental, vision, 401K, tuition reimbursement, scholarships, childcare vouchers, and this year, student debt benefit program, where we pay up to $1,000 toward our each team member's student debt program with no strings attached. We look forward to speaking with you more in detail at information sessions that we will host, and next door to visit us to find out more about us, to see a model of the Avenir. And please spend time with us so you can find out how you, like me, can start off with a job and end with a career. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dawn. That concludes the prepared remarks segment of today's presentation. Thank you all for your time. We look forward to hearing all of your comments and feedback today, as we have been for the past three years. Again, if any of you have any questions, please come next door. Please visit our showroom that discusses the project in much detail. Again, it's open seven days a week, and it's staffed with people who can answer your questions. And with that, I'll hand the meeting back to the Community Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you to the applicant for that presentation. We're now going to move into the public hearing portion. Before we begin, there are some ground rules. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the community to offer comments on the Avenir and not a venue for the public to ask questions of either the committee members or the applicant. Individuals wishing to speak must sign up at the registration table. We will be taking speakers on a first-come, first-served basis. Speakers will be allowed two minutes to present their statement. A countdown timer is visible, so each speaker is aware how much time they have remaining. When you have finished speaking, please exit to allow room for others to speak as we are close to capacity, and people will be entering throughout the hearing. In-person attendance will be capped when we reach capacity. Today's hearing is being livestreamed, recorded, and will be posted online soon after the event concludes. The recording will be closed captioned for the hearing impaired. In addition to presenting comment today, there are additional ways to provide comment. As mentioned, today's hearing is the first of two. A second public hearing will be held at this location on September 8th from 12:00 to 7:00 PM. The committee will also receive comment by electronic mail at theaveniorpubliccomment@nystec.com, or by mail, which should be directed to the Avenir Community Advisory Committee, care of NYSTEC, 540 Broadway, 3rd floor, Albany, New York, 12207. All comments, spoken, emailed, and written, will be documented and given equal review and weight by committee members. While there is no deadline for submitting comments, please note that the committee must complete its work by September 30th, 2025. Those wishing to submit comments are advised to do so as quickly as possible. If you have already submitted a comment in writing via email or mail, please do not sign up to speak if you simply plan to read your comment verbatim. Finally, attendees must remain respectful and courteous. Disruptions will not be tolerated. Anyone using offensive, threatening, or obscene language or behavior may be asked to leave at the discretion of any committee member. We will now begin to call up the speakers.
Thank you. Can we get numbers one through five to the microphone, please? When you come to the microphone, please state your name and the ZIP code that you live in. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Kelly McGowan. I live downtown 10280, which is Battery Park City. And I want to keep my comments short because I think I want to give as much time to people who live in this community. But I want to share a couple of experiences in being a 35-year resident in Battery Park City, where developers built it a little bit ad hoc without an understanding of what communities need. And they learned over time. Some of those lessons were, what do communities actually need? If you view New York as needing family-oriented anchor communities, they need schools, they need amenities, they need retail. It may not be exciting to have a dry cleaner, but you have to go to a dry cleaner. It may not be exciting to develop a bodega, but you gotta go find a place to buy your food. What I like about this development is, and by the way, full disclosure, I have no relationship with Silverstein, other than being a neighbor to them, and they are a developer who has taken account, taken into account, the real needs of a community and balancing that for development. Most New Yorkers are either pro-development or anti-development. I'm one of the people who is both pro-thoughtful development. This project, to me, and the partnership of location and the amenities that are under consideration, you couldn't ask for a better partner than Silverstein. They've been a longtime partner downtown. They helped redevelop this. I was there in 9/11. Our community was shot. This is a developer who actually cares about the community and not just maximizing their profits. Thank you.
ZIP code 10022. I am Peter Myers, Financial Secretary Treasurer of the Building and Construction Trades Council of Greater New York and Vicinity. Thank you for this opportunity to submit this testimony in support of the development of casinos in New York State and in the city of New York, including the borough of Manhattan. The Building and Construction Trades Council is an organization of local building, construction, and trade unions that are affiliated with 15 international unions in North America. Our local union affiliates represent approximately 100,000 union construction workers. The building trades' mission is to raise the standard of living for all workers, to advocate for safe working conditions, and collectively advance working conditions for our affiliates, members, as well as all workers in New York City. The development of a gaming facility would bring enormous economic benefit to the city of New York. Numerous construction and permanent jobs would be created for construction and operation of such a facility. We expect that the entities bidding on a gaming license would commit to develop their facilities under a project labor agreement and construction, and commit to labor peace agreements for their operations. These commitments help ensure that the jobs created will provide workers with good wages, medical, and retirement benefits, and help provide careers that would allow the workers and their families to live in our city. Additionally, creating these jobs will have a multiplier effect throughout the local economy. Mr. Silverstein's Avenir Project is one example of casino development in New York City that will ensure New Yorkers have access to permanent, professionally-trained, good-paying jobs, and strengthen the city and the state's economy. Projects like these that are built under project labor agreements and ensure labor harmony are a win for the workers, as well as for the city and its residents. The Building and Construction Trades Council of New York and Vicinity thanks you for the opportunity to testify of this casino development in the city. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Grace Capobianco. I'm the founder and owner of Downtown Magazine, a magazine I created shortly after 9/11 to help the area come back. There was so much negative news out there that wasn't actual fact. So I wanted to give a voice to the community and to the builders and developers to help them get the word out that Downtown was alive and would come back stronger than ever. As the publisher of Downtown Magazine, I've been honored to feature Larry Silverstein on my cover several times. And I can personally attest to his vision and his daughter's vision, now the CEO, their integrity and commitment to this city. His support has also helped keep my business alive through challenging times, and I know firsthand the positive impact of his projects and what they bring to New York. The proposal of Avenir Casino is exactly, let me say it again, exactly the kind of project the west side needs. It will transform an underutilized area near the Javits Center into a vibrant destination that complements, not just competes, with local businesses. This project will generate jobs, attract visitors, and add energy to the part of this Manhattan that has long been overlooked. New York thrives. We are here, and we're bold, and we embrace great ideas and new ideas. The Avenir is not only a casino, it is a catalyst for growth, culture, and opportunity. And I urge you to support it and allow this vision to take root and to help benefit our great city. Thank you.
Hi, folks. My name is Brian 10036. I live on 43rd and 10th. This is my neighborhood, and I love my neighborhood. I will attempt to be succinct in order to give as many of my neighbors time to voice their dissent and concerns. Please, please don't build this casino. Casinos are built to keep people inside, losing money. Whether there are windows or not, that is the business plan of a casino. Casinos are not built so people will want to go outside and spend their money in surrounding stores or shops. This casino is short-term financial gain for a few, with long-term damage to the community. Local businesses will be driven out. New Yorkers will have difficulty living in New York. There was a lot of talk by people with financial interest in this project that this will help people. Casinos hurt their economies. Casinos hurt the people who live there. I've heard over and over again from folks in this room with financial interest that say, if New York is going to let us have one, let's regulate it and make it work for us. I see a lot of big promises in this room right now with no way for us, the people, to actually hold these people accountable. Lobbyists are spending a lot of money to make people think this is a good idea. That seems to be how politics works in this country, but I don't want that to be how it works in my neighborhood. I will end with this. This hearing started, it began with some sound problems, and the crowd announced, sometimes loudly and rudely, but we still announced, that we couldn't understand essentially what was said. It didn't matter, we still had to plow through. It didn't matter if you understand what you were saying. Please understand that this makes us feel like you do not care about us. Please vote no on this casino.
Hi, I'm Jaclyn Lowry, and I live proudly in 10036. This is my neighborhood. And when I, I've lived here since 1977. When we all moved in to Manhattan Plaza, Silverstein and any other real estate development would not have been interested. We moved in, there were prostitutes going up and down 9th Avenue, male and female prostitutes. There was a horrible violent gang called the Westies. There was drug dealing. And they moved in, us, performing artists, because we basically are middle-class and actors, as the union said, they will live anywhere if you give them a break on the rent. So that is exactly what happened, and we persevered. We stuck with it, and we developed a family-friendly neighborhood. Now, real estate developers, believe me, are interested, but that's because since 1977, we've been working to make it a family-friendly neighborhood, such that there are two schools right down the block from this proposed casino, an elementary and a middle school. Within walking distance, I do not think the parents of these children in those schools are going to want to know, there's a casino a block away. So that is very important, the fact that there are schools. We need a supermarket, we don't need a casino. And I'm going to ask our elected representatives to, that we vote for, not people who live in other places, to please defend us against this predatory business. Please look out for our neighborhood. It's a great neighborhood now. So thank you very much.
Can we get numbers six through 10 to the microphone, please? Six through 10? Thank you.
I'm a resident in this neighborhood, 10036, 43rd and 10th. This, excuse me, talking, thank you. This is my home, and I'm here to stand up for my home and my neighbors. Thank you all for being here and listening to us. I am strongly opposed to building of this casino and any casino in the Times Square area. It will pull money away from the theaters. I'm a theater artist, it'll pull money away from restaurants, businesses. It'll add congestion. What was the point of the congestion toll if now you're going to pull traffic into this area? And I'd like to point out that that Avenir congestion zone that they just talked about, that's where I live. People keep talking about the economic benefits, but casinos depress property values. The National Association of Realtors has consistently reported casinos, quote, "unambiguously negative," end quote, "impact on local property values." A casino will weaken New York City's tax base because casino profits dwindle over time, and so does falling tax revenue. The representative of Silverstein Properties stood here a short time ago and told us, they can build housing, so why do they need a casino to do it? The thing that upsets me the most about the pushing through of this casino is that this is my neighborhood, and lately, a lot of elected officials don't care about what their constituents say, what their residents want. And I ask those of you that have the power to protect their residents, don't just be an elected official. Be a public servant. Be a public servant that listens to what your residents, what the public wants, not people that come from other ZIP codes to say yes to something in an area they don't live in. So again, I ask you, vote no on this casino and all casinos in the Times Square area. Thank you for your time.
Amen to what she said. My name is Liz Keefe. I am a proud resident of Manhattan Plaza, and I've been living in the 10036 ZIP code for 37 years. I live two short blocks away from the proposed casino site. For those of you that don't know about Manhattan Plaza, we are a community of 2,644 residents, 60% of which are senior citizens. No one from the Avenir team has reached out to us to consult us about what we think about this idea. So in my opinion, this would roll back all of the progress that has been made in the neighborhood, and as I said, I've been here for 37 years. And I want to share something with you. My window faces 42nd and 10th Avenue. Congestion pricing is working. It's finally working. Up to this point, I had a logbook, yes, I did, and the sirens going up 10th Avenue averaged 31 in 24 hours. That's more than one an hour. Since congestion pricing, it's about two or three a day. And what no one is mentioning is that we have one hospital on the Upper West Side, it's Mount Sinai, and that handles all of the emergencies. And believe me, they're at our building quite a bit. So no one's talking about that aspect of it. And also, let's think about all the construction projects that are going on here. You have Hudson Yards, you have the Port Authority Bus Terminal project right across the street from the proposed casino site, and now perhaps maybe even a subway station. That's four within a seven-block radius, and I ask you, how much can one tiny geographical area sustain? We would have noise and more noise. And I want to say that people will drive in. My friends from Connecticut and New Jersey still drive in, so it's kind of a pie-in-the-sky idea to think that they're going to take public transportation. And I do use public transportation every day. The two buses I use are M11 and M40. The two buses I use are M11 and M42.
Thank you, you are at time.
My name is Joel Jones. I live in 10036. I had some humorous comments to share with you today, but sitting in this presentation, I've kind of lost my sense of humor. First of all, I want to thank the Silverstein family for the job they did at World Trade Center. It's a beautiful spot. That said, I want to find out who invited you to Hell's Kitchen. I'm not aware of anyone in that neighborhood having been informed about what your plans were until quite recently. As was mentioned before, this place, Hell's Kitchen, was a hellhole for years and years and years. The people who put it back into a sort of a renaissance were not wealthy land developers. They were laborers, they were artists, they were people who couldn't afford to live anywhere else in New York City. They were the ones who turned it around, made it a family-friendly place. We don't want a casino there. Casinos are built for one reason, and that is to make money. It's the only place where a consumer goes in with money, puts money on the table, and doesn't get a product. We need products in our neighborhood. We need shopping centers. We need, we need the things that make life more livable for us. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sandy Nance and I'm a resident of Hell's Kitchen, zip code 10036. I was going to stand here and give you six or seven reasons why I am opposed to your neighborhood casino. For instance, the environmental impact of congestion construction in our neighborhood alone, we have Port Authority, we have Hudson Yards built over the railroad yards, we have the Gateway Project tunneling. These are plenty of construction jobs. Because of the environmental impact of a 60 or so-story tower so close to the Hudson River, I oppose your neighborhood casino. But what's the point, I ask you? As long as the President of the United States continues to threaten sending armed troops to the streets of New York, no one of the caliber you are counting on to fill your gaming tables is going to come to New York. You are not going to persuade or lure high rollers from Monaco. International tourism is already down and continues to plummet. Rich Europeans read newspapers and pay attention to politics, even if we don't. Your argument isn't with us. Your argument is with the President of the United States. Oh, and Mayor Mamdani has already promised free buses.
Hello, my name is Anne Haas. I've lived in Hell's Kitchen for many, many years. I'm a proud resident of Manhattan Plaza, subsidized building for performing artists. My husband is a musician and member of local 802, the musicians' union. So we are not anti-union, by the way. I don't think you'll find many Manhattan Plaza residents who could say that, who would say that because performing arts are unionized. Nonetheless, we have issues with how this project is unfolding. Just to give you a little insight into my experience with Avenir, is that a little over a week ago, the group came, the Avenir group, came to visit Manhattan Plaza tenants via Zoom. They regaled us with all the amenities of their proposed building. Their focus was on who would be attracted to the luxury hotel, expensive restaurants, and yes, the casino. And when they were done, a tenant stated, so this isn't for us, to which the presenter responded, no. It was a startlingly honest answer. No, this proposed casino, just like all the other ones, is not for us, the community. And if it is given the go-ahead by the CAC, it will come at a great cost to us. Another skyscraper project in our already overdeveloped neighborhood will bring noise, pollution, and traffic congestion to a neighborhood that will already be dealing with the impact of the extensive reconstruction of Port Authority. At 60 stories, the building will block out light and few remaining views of the river. In this same conversation, the presenter suggested that tourists coming into the Avenir would take--
Thank you for your time. Your time is up. Can I get speakers 12 through 17 to the microphone, please? Oh, we do have 11? Okay, sorry. I was told they weren't speaking. Yeah, 11's not here. I think 11's not speaking. So 12, 12 through 17, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Webb Seager. I live in zip code 10036. I speak on behalf of a large flock of shareholders at The Armory, a co-op apartment building on West 42nd Street. We oppose the Avenir Casino for these reasons. Putting a casino a subway ride away for millions of people will harm families of problem gamblers, causing financial strain, mental health issues, behavioral and emotional problems in children. Up to 90% of casino profits come from problem gamblers. Gaining tax revenues by exploiting them is a very poor bargain. A casino will hurt the quality of life in a residential neighborhood. The far west side is primarily residential, home to thousands of middle and upper-income residents. A casino will spill large numbers of people and vehicles into already congested local streets, degrading our community and our quality of life. The developers said they looked at other uses for the site, but concluded that the only thing that works is a casino. That doesn't make sense. Apartment building construction is going on now, close by. As was previously stated, a casino will hurt our property values. And finally, all of this is to say that a casino on 41st Street is a poor idea. The clear and pressing need for real estate development in New York City is housing, not a casino. Thank you very much for listening.
Hi, my name is Allison. I am part of Sky, but I also speak for my sister who's at 5510. She couldn't be here today. When I moved into New York City over 10 years ago, I chose Hell's Kitchen because it felt like a neighborhood that not only had a hustling, bustling culture, but also felt like a neighborhood. I also looked at Times Square, but chose it for obvious reasons. It's Times Square. I basically think that at the end of the day, I imagined this neighborhood being a place I could walk my kids to school, that I could not have to worry about the thousands of extra cars. Even 20% is far too much. Corners are already dangerous. And at the end of the day, I hear you talking about traffic, but I don't hear you talking about kids. The kids are right there. It's not a block away. They are across the street and you are going to take away their sunlight. You are going to cause an intense amount of destruction, among other things. And at the end of the day, when those casino goers are going to check into their hotel room, it's the same time that they get out of school. So not quite what you would say as just throughout the day. Honestly, as well, this process has failed to engage the community. I didn't know that this was happening. I found out because of a random Twitter post. No one in my building knew. When I went down to talk to the parents at Success Academy, no one had a clue as well. They said, I thought that wasn't happening. I heard something about this ages ago. No one reached out to us. During the day, a 785-foot-tall building will block sunlight so kids can't learn. And developers keep talking about community benefits, but their promises are hollow. Those so-called affordable housing is not in the area and has not been official. So put profits behind, put people and our future first.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, members of this committee. My name is Sudeshna Lindeman and I live in 10036 zip code and I'm a happy tenant of the Silverstein family. Over the course of the years, I've come to value and truly cherish what I call as the Silverstein signature. And that, in my experience, comprises of three core values: operational excellence, treating tenants like their family, and creating a safe and friendly community. I sincerely do believe that the Silverstein family will apply these three core values to the Avenir project. Now, as I understand it, the casino license is of course at the center and we've all heard that there are serious concerns about the casino. In my simple mind, I would like to please present a fact to this committee for consideration. Major cruise lines have casinos in them and cruise lines continue to attract families, even cross-generational members. I have extensively read the Avenir project's website and security plus the community are foundational to this establishment. One last note, perhaps you've seen the beautiful plot that surrounds the art-decorated plot, fence, that wooden fence that surrounds the plot today. It's created by the community. I walk past it every day when I go to work. One area of that artwork stands out to me and it boldly and proudly says, "Never bet against New York." As New Yorkers, we know 100% how true that is. Well, in a symbolic way, I translate that to mean, bet on Avenir. So please, ladies and gentlemen, members of this committee, do consider bringing this new kid into the block, Avenir. Thank you so much for your time.
Hi, how are you? My name's Spencer Lasky and I'm an architect photographer. I want to be very supportive of the Avenir project. I have seen the renderings. I think it is going to cap off the Hudson Yards with a beautiful sculpted, warm-toned building that will be open and inviting to the community. I hear a lot of discussion on both sides, but I believe from what I've seen and read, this is going to be very inclusive. The art gallery is extremely important to me as a photographer. And I think that's going to invite the community all along 11th Avenue into the facility. It has restaurants, it has the ability to take off-street parking and remove the complication of traffic. At least it's been designed in that way to eliminate or reduce the traffic flow in the neighborhood. So I want to say, as a proud union member, local 600, local 52, and all the jobs that it's going to create, I think this is a very, very positive, given the landscape of opportunities in New York City for this type of development. I think the Silverstein people are the ones to do it and I think this area is going to be the best, given all the access that we have. So thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Beatrice Ortiz, zip code 11238. I've been part of the New York City community for almost 20 years. I remember the first time I had to come to the Javits Center, I felt uneasy. It was kind of scary, you know, not safe. But time has passed and I can see that the neighborhood, the area, has changed a lot. There are a lot of restaurants, coffee places, high-rise buildings. It feels that is a very positive change. So unfortunately, there is still this unused lot that is empty and doesn't match the area. I believe that the Avenir will be a good project for that empty lot. I feel that the Avenir is a great mixed-use project. I love the architecture, the wavy facade. I think the ground floor having these opening spaces with some green landscape is amazing, is pedestrian-friendly. I like to walk a lot, so I feel that. So I also very passionate about arts and I see from the distance how the artists work on the fence of where the Avenir will be. I was very impressed with their dedication and commitment. So they really worked very hard on that fence. That really gave me a good feeling. I think that there is a real commitment to support the arts. So I just want to say that I think the Avenir project is going to be a positive thing for the community and for the New York City people. Thank you.
Can I get numbers 17 through 21 to the microphone, please? 17 through 21? Calling number 17?
Hello, everybody. My name is Luigi Scorsia. I just moved into Manhattan Plaza. I have a riverfront view and every day I look at the spot where the hotel, the casino's going to go in. Like Larry Silverstein, I'm a fellow Brooklyn guy. And because we're from Brooklyn, we believe in community and neighborhood. And I am also a 911 first responder and Mr. Silverstein supports that and keeps our memory. But my main concern is this. Since I moved in, I hear the sirens, I hear the horns honking, I see traffic being blocked. My building, like Liz over here, who's my neighbor, we have a lot of old people. I'm concerned if the fire trucks can't get through because of the traffic or the police can't get by and the sounds of the noise. And after that, you know, your presentation is the best of the three. So thank you.
No, thanks. Good afternoon. My name is Betty B. and I moved into the neighborhood 10036 as an actress. And I've been there four years. So all of a sudden I hear about the casino, because I used to live in Chelsea, so I moved up here. I said, wow, what's going to happen? And, you know, like, we didn't get a lot of information. So, you know, as a senior, I was, you know, thinking about it would be terrible, you know, person supposed to be retired to be displaced, you know? And I see you made a beautiful presentation about, you know, what you would do for people and all these things, but they did have a number on it, you know, something like 500, whatever. But I think it's many more people like that, so it's still like scary. And I wanted to, you know, address that and also about criminal behavior. You know, that is going to be around. That was a great presentation, the, you know, the police, people on the bike, it always seems that mud to seep its way in, you know? So those are like the major two things right now. And also the children in the community and what type of people it would bring into that environment. Not that I never went to a casino. Atlanta City was my girl, but I'm just saying, you know, I think in an adult, from an adult manner, looking at the children, because I'm a mother and a grandmother. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Chris. My zip code is 10023. I'm a born and raised New Yorker from the Upper West Side, not too far from here. And as someone who spends quite a bit of time in and around this neighborhood and where the Avenir site is now, I'm here to voice my support of Silverstein's efforts to build the Avenir. As you well know, the area right now is just a giant hole in the ground and I think that's really a shame to see in New York. Filling in that hole with a beautiful building would really bring connectivity and life into an area that right now really just feels very disconnected. Additionally, with the massive Port Authority Bus Terminal Project next door, building something on the site would increase security in the neighborhood, which is an issue that is especially important to this community. You know, when I learned that Silverstein's proposed project would be more than just a gaming facility, but include a hotel, restaurants, a community and art center, I was incredibly impressed and that's actually what motivated me to sign up for this hearing and speak in support of the project. Clearly, a lot of thought has gone into how this site can serve the neighborhood and New Yorkers. And I think that this stems from Silverstein's commitment to New York more generally. I, of course, know them from the work that they've done in rebuilding the World Trade Center and I think that they're good people. They're New Yorkers, they build things for New Yorkers, and I would trust Silverstein to bring this site to life. The Avenir would bring connectivity back to a neighborhood that really, really deserves it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Markucci and I'm here to support the Avenir project. A longtime New Yorker, next month will be 45 years. I've lived in Chelsea, I've lived in Murray Hill, I've been to Gramercy, Uptown, Downtown. I work downtown now. I've seen what the Silverstein company-- I've seen what the Silverstein company has done in bringing back the World Trade Center area, and I know from firsthand experience the care and quality of work that they provide. So I've heard both sides of the argument, and I respect everyone's opinion. But I really feel that this beautiful project will be a great opportunity. It'll bring more opportunities of jobs, of full-time jobs. There'll be great community art, and there'll also be wonderful restaurants. And I heard the earlier speakers say that 12% of the project is going to be committed to gambling. So there's over 80, 85% where that will be to, I think, beautiful, beneficial parts of the community. So like I said before, I think you're in good hands with the Silverstein Properties Organization. I've seen it firsthand, the care. They do care, and security is the utmost care with this company, especially at the World Trade Center. I've seen what they've done. It's a very safe environment, and it's also been very attached to the community needs. So I just want to, again, support this project, and thank you for your time.
Could we get numbers 22 through 26 to the microphone, please? 22 through 26. Remember to state your name and your ZIP Code as well. Thank you.
I'm Matt Jasbyak. I live in the ZIP Code of 10016. I'm the founder and CEO of a nonprofit called Rethink Food. We provided over 33 million meals to New Yorkers over the last six years, so I'm proud to say that we are present in every ZIP Code in Manhattan. We are very in favor of the Avenir Casino Project. And the main reason is, is when we heard there was going to be a casino project, we reached out to all of the providers, everybody who had a proposal, and not a single one responded to our email. They came to us and said, "We're concerned about excess food. We're concerned about sustainability. We're concerned about affordability. We want to partner with Rethink Food to make as many meals for low-income New Yorkers as possible." I've been running this organization for eight years. I've raised over $150 million, and I've made more meals than any other organization in the city. I have never seen commitment like that to community. And I think when we're looking for a casino operator, we should be looking for the one that we trust, that cares about this city, that has done great things for the city. And that is why I'm staunchly in favor for the Avenir. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brian Sloan, 10001. I'm also on Community Board Four, and I'm here today to discuss why approving the Avenir Project is not only beneficial, but also essential for the future of our city. I want to highlight three key reasons, which I like to call the Three Js: jobs, javits, and jackpots. So the first, jobs. I know you all saw the cover of the New York Times. Over the last year, New York City added zero jobs over the past year. We need more jobs. This project directly addresses this, creating 4,000 union construction jobs and 5,000 permanent union jobs upon completion. These aren't just normal jobs. They are great jobs, high-paying positions that provide stable incomes, opportunities for thousands of New Yorkers, directly contributing to our economic growth. Second is javits. A JLL study found that 83% of meeting planners consider a hotel near or attached to a convention center necessary or highly important. How many nearby hotel rooms does javits have? Not enough. This project brings 1,000 hotel rooms next to javits, helping reposition javits against convention centers in Chicago, Orlando, Las Vegas, and Atlanta. And with business tourists comes tax receipts. And finally, the last J is for jackpot. And I don't just mean for casino guests. I'm talking about an economic jackpot for New York City and New York State. We need to generate additional tax receipts. The CBC has the city at a $4 billion structural deficit, a budget gap, rather, starting next year, and a $15.5 billion structural state budget gap starting in 2028. So all those wonderful programs that we all want, they need this project. I've reviewed the labor and projected taxes and projected gaming revenue and believe that this project will bring close to $1 billion a year in tax receipts. That is a jackpot that will help fill in budget deficits. The bottom line is that the casino licenses exist and will be awarded. We can bring the advantages that come along with it to our neighborhood or watch those jobs, the hotel rooms, the associated revenue, go to another part of New York City. I'd like to bring those benefits to Midtown West. Thank you.
My name is Judalina Santiago, and I'm a resident of East Harlem and proud member of the Hotel Gummins Council. As a union member, I support Avenir because it's the kind of project that will bring real opportunity to working people on our city like the one I have. The project will create 4,000 construction jobs and 5,000 hospitality jobs in the hotel, restaurant, and casino. These aren't just any job. These are good-paying jobs with benefit and protection that help amenity and will provide training local residents for long-term role on top of that. The Avenir will bring investment to the neighborhood, create affordable housing on the West Side, and invest hundreds of millions into local community, program, and organization. I urge you to approve this project for people like me and create good jobs, affordable housing, and a strong neighborhood.
Thank you very much. My name is Nadia Artwal, and I'm living in a Silverstein building. And I first want to say thank you because I have lived in a building during COVID that really took care of its residents. I've also passed by the construction side that we're talking about, where my kids went to school right next to it for four years, encountering all kinds of weird incidents. And I can say, it could have only gotten better from there. I'm also from Germany, from this town where I learned very early on, where when you have a casino nearby, that's not a threat, that's elevating a city. Look at Monte Carlo, look at Baden-Baden. You can Google that weird name, but it's a very posh city. A casino is not a threat. And if it's just part of an amazing construction that is bringing more security, more vibrance to our neighborhood, more jobs, then I'm wondering, what the hell are we scared about? I really don't get it. So I also would say, as somebody who has lived in this neighborhood with kids, as a single mom, as an immigrant, in a Silverstein building, I think I have a pretty good perspective, and I see it from both ends. As a journalist and a publicist, both, I'm always about the open mind. I'm always about, listen, what is this site saying? What is that site saying? That's why I didn't come with notes. I want to come in with certain thoughts, but I also took everything that was said. I hear the fear, and I really think that it's not valid. The chances, the prosperity, the opportunity is so much greater than any fear that can be artificially installed into this. New York needs this. We need to be more vibrant. We need to bring in the Big Bang. I went through cancer for three years, from 2021 to 2024, and I was so glad. I was living in a city that gave me opportunity to experience, to have entertainment. And this will just be another wonderful, vibrant opportunity.
All 26, I'm sorry. A good afternoon. Jason Christman. I reside at Silver Towers, and I'm a proud resident there. I support this project wholeheartedly. Living in New York City for 24 years, I've seen a lot of different management companies. Silverstein really stands out as being one of the best. They've been in the city for decades. They deliver on resilient, well-managed buildings, and they stand behind what they build. They also have pride in what they build. Mr. Silverstein visited Silver Towers on many occasions. I think his family even had parties in Silver Tower, Silver Lounge. So he's very proud of what he builds. The service culture. Living in Silver Towers, it's an amazing experience from the top down. You have Janelle Alonde, who's our building manager. Amazing. You have people at the front desk who treat you, they're basically like family. The maintenance is unbelievable. I call and I have an issue in my building. An hour later, they fix it, even if it means switching out an appliance. Immaculate operations. It's always pristine, always safe and secure. And I would expect the same standards as the Avenir. I think this culture, this one built at Silver Towers, is just going to spread over to the Avenir and be a really well-run, amazing building. Thank you for your time.
We're calling 27 to 32. 27.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Batris, and I'm a proud union carpenter. Also, I'm an organizer. I'm here to support Silverstein Casino Avenir Project because for people like me, minorities, immigrants, and working-class New Yorkers, this is more than just a building. This is a getaway to the middle class. This project represents opportunity. It means union jobs with real wages, real benefits, and real dignity. It means a chance for someone who has never had a shot to build a career, support a family, and own a future. That's what the building trades have done for me, and that's what this project can do for 1,000 more over here in New York. Silverstein has a long history of working with the trades, and they have shown that they understand the value of investing in people. This is not just the concrete and steel. They built this city with union labor. Now, they are helping to build lives. We need projects like this, projects like this, that they just change the skylines. They change lives. I stand behind Silverstein Casino Avenir because it's a step towards equality, opportunity, and progress for all New Yorkers. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Bastarelli, and I'm a business representative for the New York City District Council of Carpenters that covers Midtown West. I'm here today to voice strong support for Silverstein Casino Avenir Project. Silverstein Properties has been a steadfast ally of the building trades for decades. Their commitment to union labor isn't just talk, it's action, year after year, project after project. They've consistently built with union hands, and they've helped build careers, families, and futures in the process. This project is more than just a development. It's a continuation of a partnership that has lifted up working people across this city. It will create good-paying union jobs, support local business, and strengthen the economic backbone of New York City. We stand with Silverstein because they've always stood with us. Please, let's move this project forward.
Hi. 11101. Good afternoon, and thank you for inviting me to speak. My name is Daphne Levine. I am an architect and urban planner with a PhD in urban planning. Over the years, I have studied and worked on how cities grow and how the right projects can bring new life to all places. That is why I believe the Avenir site is not only a good choice, it is the best choice for a Manhattan casino. For decades, the area at 11th Avenue and 41st Street has been left behind. Factories, railroads, and highways cut through the neighborhood. The streets became dark and unsafe. Much of the land sat empty. And while Hudson Yard and Times Square became symbols of success, this pocket stayed broken and disconnected. The Avenir can change that. First, it will act as a bridge connecting Hudson Yard and Hell's Kitchen into one strong corridor of culture, business, and entertainment. Second, it will extend the energy of Times Square towards the Javits Center, supporting tourism, local businesses, and the city's economy. Third, this site is shovel-ready and built around transit with subways, buses, and regional links nearby. It welcomes both visitors and residents without pushing anyone out. But the Avenir is not just a casino. It is urban infrastructure. It will bring thousands of jobs, safer streets, better lighting, and real improvements for the families who live nearby today. This is what good planning should do: repair the past, improve the present, and prepare for the future. That is why the Avenir is a project that best represents the highest and the best use for this site. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ebony Mackey, and my ZIP Code is 10036, specifically Silver Towers. I am in favor of the casino. I'm going to explain why as briefly as I can. Not only does Silverstein Properties provide fabulous properties, they own, operate, and love them in a way that I've never seen before. I moved to New York about 14 years ago, and I lived at the atelier across the street, and I know poor ownership and poor management when I see it. One deal: a donation of $22.5 million plus 0.5% of profits in perpetuity to Manhattan Plaza. That was a promise made to the Manhattan Plaza Tenants Association made by the proposed Times Square Casino. As I said, I live on Silverstein property. The casino that they are proposing, the Avenir, it's only 12% of the proposed product. As usual, the majority of the people are focusing on the minority issue. Silverstein Property will invest back into the community. I am a small business owner myself. People are saying that artists built this area, and I'd argue that there are pieces of this and that business builds, business innovates, business invests. And quite frankly, I think a lot of people do not understand how business works. It will add to the beautiful skyline that everyone around the world knows and recognizes. I hear a lot of people concerned about kids, and rightfully so. I do think that there needs to be personal accountability held there. The casino will also invite artists into the neighborhood. The casino will also add and invest in the safety of the neighborhood, and it will turn something that has been destructed and build it back, just like they did with the World Trade Center. Silverstein Properties has a long history of rebuilding after destruction and should be trusted. Please vote for the casino.
Hi, my name is John, and I live in 10036. I've lived in New York City for 30-plus years. I've lived in Hell's Kitchen for 18 years. I now live in Silver Towers, and it's a great building with great amenities. Hell's Kitchen used to be trash, and now it's thriving and close to Hudson Yards. New York City needs tourism as it's the greatest city in the world. How is it that we don't already have a casino? A beautiful structure that graces the skyline is what New York City needs. We need great jobs. We need restaurants. We need small businesses. Silverstein will provide this with the Avenir. People opposed have mentioned we need supermarkets and dry cleaning. We do, and we need great-paying jobs to afford these things. The Avenir will provide this. People were opposed to Hudson Yards and a mall, and now that's thriving. New York City needs the Avenir. Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Reagan, 07302. I work in New York Daily. I wanted to speak very quickly about the positive impact on restaurants, the positive impact of restaurants on communities and therefore, the positive impact of this project. I am currently the president of Restaurant Operations for Union Square Hospitality Group, and I'm proud to say that I've had a 35-year career in restaurants, 20 of them with Union Square. And during that time, I've really been able to see the positive impact that restaurants can have on a community, whether it be for the guests, the employees, purveyors, and the really network and the thread of the community itself. And so for that reason, I think that this is a really great project for New York. We learned during COVID how important it is to have the pride that you carry with having employees. We had about 3,000 employees during that time. We went down to about 30. Gladly, we've been able to build that back up, and we're now just as strong as ever. But the important point there is, is you understand how important restaurants are for employees and the impact that they can have on their families, their extended family, et cetera. So when I think of this project, I really think of the importance that this could have for people not having just jobs, but having real careers, like mine. It's really built into something really beautiful and been able to support my family, support extended family, et cetera. So for that reason, I support this project, and thank you for listening.
Calling numbers 33 to 38. 33 to 38, please.
Hello. My name is Joe Tarasco, 11231. But like John, I also work full-time in New York City. I am also a member of Union Square Hospitality Group, where I am a vice president of operations for daily provisions. I'm really here to express my support for opportunities for hospitality professionals to build meaningful careers that can uplift themselves and their families. About 20 years ago- families. About twenty years ago, I walked into Gramercy Tavern with a resume in one hand and fingers crossed in the other with the hope and expectation that I might have a chance to work at that restaurant and cook food for a living. In the course of twenty years, all under the umbrella of Union Square Hospitality Group, I've had the chance to cook, I've had the chance to be a sous chef, I've had the chance to be an executive chef, a director of operations, and now a vice president of operations. That has been a fruitful journey for me, and it's one that I hope other people have the opportunity for as well. Opportunities like that only come from strong organizations and strong projects. So, I understand that I don't personally live in the community in which this project could potentially be built, but I belong to the New York City community, and I trust that our community as a whole will be richer for projects like this. So, thank you for listening.
Hi, my name is Lena Chardulo. I also work for Union Square Hospitality Group, and I am the executive chef at Union Square Cafe. Similarly, I have worked for Union Square Hospitality Group for sixteen years, and I also started as a line employee and have had the opportunity throughout my career to work my way up. I think that knowing that Union Square Hospitality Group is invested in training many of the people who are going to be getting these jobs that are created, and here it gives me a certain amount of faith in the opportunity that can be had. Line employees don't have to stay line employees, and people that are making hourly wages have opportunity to real growth and a lot of flexibility within it. And I think that an organization that cares about that growth and is already committed to a partnership with that, to me, feels like a very good thing. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robert McCucci, 10128, and I've been in New York City for many years with my family, and we've seen many buildings come up over the years. We've seen many environments change, et cetera, and upgraded. But I have to say, with my experience with Silverstein Properties, their work is stellar. What I've experienced down at the World Trade Center, and how this company has spread out throughout the community with their own employees, with families and tenants, I've never seen anything like it, neither have my family. And I've heard what's going on here with this new Avenir project. And if it's anything, all I can say is that it's probably going to be triple-fold, the quality that Silversteins could provide after learning what they've learned over the years creating World Trade Center and other establishments. So, I feel it's a win-win situation. You just can't go wrong. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Lorenzo Brusascia, and I'm currently based in Sweden, but however, I've had the privilege of living in New York for many, many years. My parents met at Columbia Law School, and I met my wife in New York. When I speak to people across the world, I'm struck by two main things. One group of people who say, "I would love to go to New York. It sounds so exciting. It sounds so vibrant." And of course, it is. And then there's a second group of people who I speak to, and they say, "I love New York, and I can't wait to go back. I would visit it all the time if I could." Now, it seems to me that New York is the modern Rome, and all roads lead to here. We heard the number sixty-five million tourists that was said before, an incredible amount of people who come here. And I'm here to tell you that I speak to those sixty-five million people across the world, in Oceania, in South Africa, and they are telling me one thing. They are telling me, "We want to have a glamorous and sophisticated experience in a beautiful place, in restaurants, see wonderful art, and enjoy a great hotel experience, and we know that there will be thousands of jobs created because of this." Simply put, what they're telling me is, "If you build, we will come." And finally, I would like to say, I've flown across the Atlantic Ocean to say, "I support this project wholeheartedly." Thank you.
Hi, my name's Rob Batshuder. I live in 10038. I moved to New York from Virginia in 2018, as a young entrepreneur. Started a food business here in 2018, and since then, we have worked with Rethink Food, which is working directly with Silverstein Properties on this project. And through COVID, through the last five years, our relationship with Rethink Food has saved our business. And with them, we've been able to create hundreds of jobs and make hundreds of thousands of meals for people in need. So, while I've never worked with Silverstein Properties, I trust Rethink Food empirically, and I know if they're working with Silverstein, that there is a driven mission to support the community in need from a food aspect and to support local food entrepreneurs. So, while there will be casinos in New York, I think the decision to work with high-value companies, companies that are looking at the community, companies that are supporting local restaurants and supporting those in need, is definitely needed, and I would support this project, not because I know Silverstein, but because I know Rethink, and I know their mission, and I know their integrity. And if they've chosen to partner with Silverstein, I trust Silverstein. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank the CAC for hosting some time, and while I do appreciate this as a difficult negotiation, I live in the neighborhood. I am a union member, and I appreciate everyone's comments, but unless you live here, you do not understand the impact, and you cannot plan appropriately. I appreciate that the presentation was beautiful, but no one has addressed the major gaps left out of the presentation. I'm happy to hear the positives, but let's be real, for the residents who live in this neighborhood, I have lived here for five years. I have lived in New York for thirty. I am working class. I have to run to my second job so I can afford to keep living in this city. And every time you take away any kind of open green spaces, more sunlight, there are incredible existing pressures within this neighborhood that are already negatively impacting life. We cannot have our children cross the street safely, and I'm sorry, but honestly, the, I understand Hudson Yards has been a big blessing to many people, but ask anyone who lives in this neighborhood what it's done to your commute, your noise pollution, your air pollution, avian death. We are a huge migratory bird sanctuary in New York City. I understand we all need a good skyline. I understand people want to come from Sweden and Europe, and people who live on the Upper East Side care, and I care about union workers. Believe me, I will not cross that line. However, none of those people live here, and there are too many gaps in your presentation. And again, I would like to reiterate what this very incredible, articulate young woman said: "Don't be about profit. We all see where it is. Be a public servant. Make New York City great because we have a working class, middle class." Thank you.
Can we get numbers thirty-nine through forty-four, please? Thirty-nine through forty-four to the microphone?
Good afternoon. My name is Victoria, zip code 10036. I live at 55510, and I want to speak about the real impact this project would have. I've lived in this neighborhood since lockdown, and this is my home. Traffic patterns here are already dangerous, not only from the cars that constantly flow around the tunnel entrances, but the multiple construction projects that are often left unattended. I myself fell into an open pit that was unmarked for six weeks and broke my foot last spring. Ongoing construction for the next decade or more for Port Authority already makes traffic a nightmare, but this is about more than traffic. This is about the quality of the life for the people who live here. The building you are planning to build will overshadow a home already for children, families, and a close-knit community. A development of this size will destroy sunlight, increase pollution, and bring late-night noise and activity that do not belong in a residential neighborhood. They say revitalize our community, but we are already a vibrant community where we walk our dogs, raise our children, and know our neighbors. This community is not a shopping mall or Vegas Strip, and it has not been appropriately involved because it is midday on a weekday, and most of my neighbors work and cannot be here. To echo another neighbor, we have a beautiful mural surrounding that current lot that reminds us, "Never bet against New York," and we, the neighborhood, not corporations and outside billionaire interests, are New York.
Hi, zip code 10016. I'm Chip Wade. I'm the CEO of Union Square Hospitality Group. You've heard from some of our leaders. USHG is the restaurant hospitality group founded by Danny Meyer. We are excited about this project, but I'm equally excited to work with Silverstein Group and the partners that they have assembled. They share our values around strengthening communities and strengthening projects. I'm very confident that this project will bring and strengthen the community of Hell's Kitchen. My leaders talked about job creations, but also succession planning and growth and opportunities for them to create wealth and give back to their families and their communities. I confidently believe that this project will be a strong contributor to the Hell's Kitchen community, and we're excited to partner. Thank you.
Hi, Danny Charred, 10580. I'm the founder of DC Finance. I live in New York and work with my wife, Linda, and our five kids. We are the largest event and conference company in the ultra-high net worth world. We bring people from all around the world, leading thought leaders, entrepreneurs, and high-net worth families to our events. We do over eighty events a year, and the majority is here in North America. We conduct them in several locations in the U.S. for several days. The families attending from around the globe look for safety, cleanliness, a decent nearby hotel, usually connected to the convention center, and amenities for ease of travel and efficiency. The Javits Center, which should have been ideal for our events, is currently not serving us well, which is why we conduct our events in less optimal locations. We would love to have an entertainment center adjacent to where we will have our events and with restaurant options and hotel for our guests. I'm not a gambler myself, but believe that if there is a casino coming to New York, it should be, one, in Manhattan, to serve and entertain the visitors from out of town; two, be in this location, next to the Javits Center, not between the UN, which is blocked many times of the year, and NYU Langen Hospital, as they can't afford to have a high volume of traffic near the hospital. It should definitely not be in Times Square, where it's already the most congested place in the city. And three, the third point is, it should be managed and owned by families who, like my wife, Linda, and I, have New York in heart and care about the community for decades to come. This is a real responsibility, and Silverstein Properties is known to care about New York. In summary, not to put any potential side down based on my professional experience, adding a good hotel, bringing safety, as I witnessed at the World Trade Center, the cleanliness and responsibility from a prominent New York family that cares about the city can make all the difference for this West Side community and for the Javits Center. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share my thoughts, and I definitely support this. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alejandro Medina, a resident of River Place since 2000, area code 10036, and I support the Avenir. I grew up in New York City, went to high school and college in Manhattan, would frequently be in Times Square for classes or to go to Port Authority to visit family in New Jersey. I have friends that grew up in Hell's Kitchen, when Hell's Kitchen lived up to that name. About twenty-six years ago, I saw a tall building at the far west end of Forty-second Street from Times Square, Forty-second and Seventh. About twenty-five years ago, I was fortunate enough to become a tenant of that building. While my home was beautiful and safe, the area was desolate and unsafe. The closest we had to an amenity was a mobile mart. Today, you can no longer see River Place from Times Square. The neighborhood has transformed by developments that have brought housing, the Hudson Yards, a mall, restaurants, and people. Foot traffic, residents have made the area safer and built a community. While the Hell's Kitchen of the past is no more, it continues to need improvement. Areas that remain desolate, such as Forty-Fifth and Eleventh, and areas on Eleventh north of Forty-Sixth Street, remain unsafe. The Avenir would add a welcome and exciting destination to residents of Hell's Kitchen, people from all over the city. I'm excited at the possibility of having restaurants, community spaces, a hotel, and casino as a destination down the block to partake with friends, neighbors, and family. I'm excited at this, that this will transform this immediate area into a vibrant and safe place. I trust the people responsible for building this lovely community that I live in on the far west end of Forty-second Street will continue to help it prosper and further enhance the neighborhood. Today, I'm not only appreciative of and enjoy what these developers have built, but more importantly, the community it has created. Today, there is a range of all types of people, of all age groups. Today, I have an actual neighborhood and community. I believe the Avenir would further enhance the lives of the people living here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Clayton Calvert. I live in 10027, and I'm a lifelong New Yorker. I think this project addresses a lot of the issues that our city faces right now. Increased revenue would definitely help the MTA, help the city at large. I also think that, looking at the traffic mitigation plan, it actually seems pretty reasonable, considering that they've made a lot of allocations for trucks and also cars turning left on Forty-first Street to pull into the building and then in another alcove there. Also, passing by this site for many years, I mean, it's just terrible to see it empty for so long, and so my question would be, why has nothing been there before? And so, when a casino license went out, you start to look at the proposals, and you realize that you want a proposal that really speaks to New Yorkers and that addresses the needs of the city, and this does that. And also, considering, you know, the number I keep hearing, that 12% of the footprint of the building is dedicated to the casino, that would then mean that the rest is actually for things like arts, food, experiences for the local community. And in a city that's driven by experiences, you're also going to want to bring tourists there as well. So, I think that by and large, this really, really makes me feel good as a New Yorker, seeing a company like Silverstein that has this long track record of doing the impossible, because, you know, after 9/11, no one saw the World Trade Center coming back in the way that it did. And so I think, in the same way, taking this empty lot and transforming it into something that could really help the city would make me really happy to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get speakers forty-five through fifty to the microphone, please? Forty-five through fifty to the microphone. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Parker Calvert. I'm a lifelong New Yorker, born and raised. I'm in 10027. I'm the son of an artist and a teacher who moved to New York with a dream in 1982. You know, I think I have a unique perspective on a lot of the problems that I've heard addressed, and so I took a few notes just so I could touch on them. Here are the facts. In my eyes, the casinos are coming. Whether or not you're for them or against them is absolutely irrelevant. They're coming one way or the other, and I think we have to accept that. And so, in accepting that, then you have to say, well, what's the next best thing? Having people who care about what they're doing, who listen to a community, who've got a track record of addressing issues in the developments that they come and work on. So, when I think about New York City needing revenue, job development, things like working with nonprofits, like Rethink Food, nobody's doing that. And I think, listening to other nonprofit directors, myself being a nonprofit director as well, it's important to work with corporations, because when I've approached other developers to help us with projects, nobody has even listened to us, let alone responded to an email. And so, when I think about the cons, okay, sure, I can listen to traffic, but there's a reason Jimmy Hendrix wrote about crosstown traffic fifty years ago, okay? And so, for me, that's not a valid concern. When I think about the kids in the neighborhood, I'm sorry, but my first memory was walking up the stairs at Astor Place and a homeless man trying to abduct me. So, there's no shielding people from the realities of living in a city like New York City. And a project like this from the outside is beautiful architecture and the best architecture in the entire neighborhood. And so, when you look at that and you realize that the casino is a fraction of this, we're doing something important here. And lastly, I'd like to touch on the fact that a lot of the dismay I've heard might be associated with the fact that there's a nonprofit in this area called the West Side Community Fund, which got $22.5 million from another developer who's trying to get another casino built, and to date, $1.3 million has been given out in seven years, and as a And as a nonprofit director, I find that horrible. Let's do what's best for New York City. This is for the greater good. Thank you for your time.
Is there a 46 speaker? Okay. Go for it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Advisory Committee. I'm Dr. Shakima North Albert, 10036, Chief Executive Officer at Covenant House New York. Covenant House is one of the largest providers of shelter to youth who are overcoming homelessness in New York City. Our organization have been serving New York City youth for over 50 years. We serve 1,500 teenagers, young adults, and single mothers with children annually at our facility located at 460 West 41st Street, between Dyer and 10th Avenue. The overwhelming majority of the young people we serve are New Yorkers from all of the five boroughs. They have histories that involve the city's child welfare system, and they are survivors of child abuse and human trafficking. Over 90% of our young people are youth of color, and 30% are a part of the LGBTQ+ community. It is a pleasure for me to appear before you all today to voice Covenant House's support for Silverstein's property proposal to build the Avenir. This project will provide many incredible economic and social benefits to the Hudson Yards Hell's Kitchen communities, including an investment in Covenant House New York that will enable us to help serve more youth overcoming homelessness and to provide more effective life-saving programs than ever before. Covenant House and Silverstein Properties have had a partner together for more than a decade to support thousands of New York City youth on their journeys from homelessness to hope. The company and the Silverstein family have made incredibly generous investments in our mission at Covenant House over the years and helped us to provide young people in need to access safe, stable housing, high-quality physical and mental health services, and effective job training programs. As the CEO of Covenant House New York and on behalf of the entire Covenant House community, some of whom are here today, we are respectfully requesting that the committee support Silverstein Properties' application to move forward with the Avenir as it will help change thousands of lives of New York City youth and New York City for the better. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Todd Monahan, 10036. I'm a native New Yorker and a resident of Manhattan Plaza. Good afternoon to everyone here and the members of the Advisory Committee. As I mentioned, my name is Todd Monahan, and I am also a Senior Vice President at Covenant House, having served the organization for over 25 years. I'm a clinical social worker by training, and I'm here today representing Covenant House's staff, our Board of Directors, and the young people that we serve each year. There's actually a group of my colleagues, the men and women who work at Covenant House New York here, who I'd asked to stand for a moment. These are men and women who work in our shelter with our young people. And so as Shakima North articulated, Covenant House is very excited about the Avenir. And we respectfully request that this Advisory Committee and our elected officials represented here in New York City and New York State approve Silverstein Properties' application. Covenant House's shelter is just one block from the Avenir site on 41st and 10th Avenue. We're open 24/7 each year, where we provide food, clothing, shelter, and counseling to over 1,500 youth experiencing homelessness, including single mothers with children. Most of our kids have been raised in poverty and forced to cope with difficult circumstances early on in their lives. Over 30% of our kids that seek shelter at Covenant House identify as gay, lesbian, and transgender. For over a decade, employees from Silverstein Properties, from junior staff to senior executives, including Lisa Silverstein, the company's CEO, have volunteered countless hours to our mission, including in our programs with Covenant House youth, spending time with them in person at Silverstein's corporate headquarters in our classrooms, helping them write resumes and prepare for job interviews. Also, every year, Silverstein Properties has made very generous contributions to our work. The Avenir will provide Covenant House its much-needed funding and will expand and enhance our program so we can achieve the critical outcomes on behalf of our youth. In addition, the project and Covenant House's longstanding partnership with Silverstein will offer young people valuable career opportunities and access to affordable housing. The Avenir will provide effective and lasting solutions to youth homelessness.
Thank you, sir.
I hope you all will enjoy my family and Covenant House in supporting this project.
Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Diaz. I'm one of the probably 70 tenants still living originally at One River Place. And when I think about the Avenir as a business coming into the neighborhood, it just makes my bright eyes probably brighter and brighter. Because for us, I live in the neighborhood. Like, somebody was claiming that it's only for the people who don't live. I live, I've been here 25 years and in New York for 40 years. And the opportunities that Silverstein gave us as a tenants, even during the pandemic, to have services no less than regular services is an example of what they can do with that business. I worked for the Census during the pandemic, and I went to the Atelier to do my job. I went to the Manhattan Plaza to do my job, to do the Census. It was a disaster because they didn't provide the services that we got in Silver Tower and in One River Place. So that example for me means that whatever business, that is a family business, is going to be doing there is going to be great. Also, we are senior citizens. Think about the future for the new generation. In 30 years, we're going to be dead. So think about for the future. Those kids are going to have a job. People are talking about, we're not going to live forever. We are gone in the next 30 years. Think about the future for the new generation. They need a job, an opportunity. Silversteins can do it for them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is James Jorash. I live in 10016. I have some experience in casino gaming. I worked for the Tropicana many years ago. I did financial planning, analysis, casino accounting. I was eventually the numbers guy for the Tropicana Casino. I want to bring a data analysis to this. I want to bring it up a level to broaden the vision a little bit. I've been doing a lot of research and refreshed my research on what is going on in gaming today in other jurisdictions and the lessons that they have from New York City. And I've looked at and researched New Orleans, Mississippi, Michigan, Pennsylvania casinos, Atlantic City, Connecticut, Boston. There are some very consistent lessons to be learned there that matter here and matter for this city. I do not have any relation to the casinos they're proposing. I have no relation to Silverstein, though I am very impressed with the outpouring of support for Silverstein. It must be an incredible organization. But I'd like to say that one of the things that you see when you look at other jurisdictions is that revenue climbs when you bring casinos in. Eventually, it plateaus, and it starts to fall. What happens when it starts to fall? What happens over and over again is that they turn to other revenue sources, online gaming, mobile gaming. And that's what makes up the difference. And I'm saying that is a tsunami that is currently hitting. And if New York puts in casinos, that is likely to happen. New York City already has $2 billion in revenue for sports betting. That's number one in the country. One-third of all gaming is sports betting now. And it's not sports betting at a casino, it's right here. We need to be careful with that and understand where this might go with casinos, where it's going to play out, and what we can do now to prepare, to think about those revenues coming in, to think about the negotiations, whether the casinos, the physical casinos, get part of that revenue or not. It's a decision that needs to be made, I think, today before we approve casinos. Thank you.
Okay, so if we can get numbers 51 through 56 up, please, to the microphone. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Steve, and I am the Long-Term Resident of this neighborhood's, as ZIP Code 10036. I believe I first heard about the new casino proposal in an interview a couple months back, in which Mr. Silverstein calls our neighborhood "the perfect location" because, quote, "this is an area where there are no people around who object to it." Well, I've lived one block from the proposed site for more than 20 years, and I and many of my neighbors do strongly object to this. Regardless if you agree with whether we actually need a massive new casino in Manhattan or not, I strongly believe that this is specifically not the right location for it. Putting a huge new development on this block directly at the entrance to the Lincoln Tunnel, not nearby, but directly at the entrance to the Lincoln Tunnel, is pretty crazy to anybody who lives here or drives through it. We do not need more congestion or noise on this or surrounding blocks. As someone who walks across the proposed block sometimes multiple times a day, I can tell you that existing traffic can be awful on a good day, and it's truly gridlocked, specifically at areas like 41st Street and between 10th and 11th Ave, for hours every single day of the week. Traffic, horns, sirens, and pedestrian danger are already unacceptable in this area and will only increase with this development. Long after the short-term construction benefits go away with this, after this proposed tower would be built, the area's residents and the voters here would have to live with it. The 24/7 noise and traffic would still be here. Thanks very much.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ken Baker. I'm the Culinary Director at Rethink Food. My boyfriend and myself, we live at 237 West 18th Street, 10012. We both work and live here in the community. I had prepared remarks to talk about, you know, Rethink's impact and what this project means to us, but I really wanted to address some of the opposition from my neighbors here. I came to New York, my boyfriend. We both have extraordinary New York stories. Those extraordinary New York stories are becoming far and far beyond the reach of many, many people. And why is that? Because of the lack of opportunities that this project will give us, which is a catalyst of livelihood, of economic mobility for individuals coming from legacies of under-invested communities, coming from outreach avenues of legacy of going to college or whatnot, being able to just put boot to ground and work and being able to provide for your family is what this project will provide for us here in this community. When I look at the opposition, I hear and see individuals who have already benefited from that legacy, that are in the dawning phases of their careers. And what we're talking about right now here in this moment is preserving. In this campaign where we hear in the mayoral election this cost of affordability, we're talking about preserving that outlet of affordability, and that's underpinned by good, quality jobs. And what I do know is that this job, this proposal, is not only going to provide construction jobs, permanent union, hospitality, restaurant, food service jobs that have been the catalyst for why I stand in this role today. That is what we're talking about here. And two, the individuals who want to bring up the moral notions of a casino, that's the 12% we're talking about. Let's talk about the 88% of this project that's going to provide economic catalytic opportunity for this neighborhood here and now. So as a member of the Rethink family and also as a member of this neighborhood, I strongly support this project and urge the board to support the project as well.
Hi, my name is Michael Landy, and I grew up on 43rd and 10th. When I say grew up, I'm born and raised in Hell's Kitchen. So I'm speaking to all the people who live in Manhattan Plaza and surrounding areas. I am strongly, strongly for this casino. Right now, I live in Silver Towers, but I grew up in the Strand. And it seems like the area has changed a lot. I'm 38 years old today. Not today, but 38 years old. And I watch it get better and then get worse. And people in Manhattan Plaza have this security guard system around their building. The rest of the community doesn't have that. I think the security that this brings and the oversight into public safety is going to be great for the rest of the community. I have two kids, a four-month-old, a four-year-old. I don't like to bring them on 10th Avenue. I just can't. It's not, doesn't feel safe to me. There's people who sell drugs in front of schools. No one does anything about it, speaking to the board here. But in all seriousness, I think this is great for the community, great for jobs, and great for the city. Thanks.
Good afternoon. My name is Elise Cantowitz, and I am a resident of 10036, living just two blocks from the proposed casino site. I'm here to strongly oppose this development, any casino in Midtown. The proposal as it stands is deeply flawed. There is no parking plan, no improvements to public transportation, and no feasible infrastructure to manage the dramatic increase in cars, ride shares, and delivery vehicles that a casino inevitably brings. The only existing public transportation option to the far west side is the M42 bus, which is often impossibly overcrowded from tourists coming from the nearby circle line and other PR activities with no space for local residents to travel across town. The burden of the congestion will fall squarely on those of us who live here. Our streets will be clogged, our blocks will be noisier, and the safety of pedestrians, including families and seniors, will be compromised. It's not realistic to think that hotel guests lugging suitcases, families going to the art space, and elderly casino guests will walk 15 minutes or wait 30 minutes for a shuttle. And what about the 5,000 employees, who I'm guessing will not be taking the private show either? Even without a casino, our neighborhood already struggles with traffic backups in which the congestion pricing plan was just put in place to help. Introducing a major attraction of this scale without providing new transit or parking is irresponsible. It prioritizes outside visitors and short-term profits over the quality of life of residents who are here every single day. I'm not opposed to development, but it must be smart, sustainable, and respectful of the community. This plan is none of those things. I urge the board to reject this proposal until there's a serious detailed plan that addresses transportation congestion and the well-being of those who call this neighborhood a home. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Carlos Santos. I am a resident of Manhattan and a proud member of the Hotel and Gaming Council as a unit member. I support the Avenir because it's the kind of project that will bring real opportunities to working people in our city like the ones I have. The project will create 4,000 construction jobs and 5,000 hospitality jobs in the hotels, restaurants, and casinos. These aren't just any jobs. These are good-paying jobs with benefits, protections, that help families and that will prioritize training local residents for long-term roles. On top of that, the Avenir will bring investments to the neighborhood, create affordable housing on the West Side, and invest hundreds of millions into local community programs and organization. I urge you to prove this project for people like me and create good jobs, affordable housing, and stronger neighborhood. Thank you.
The committee would like to take a 15-minute break now to give everybody an opportunity to stand up, stretch your legs, and we'll start back again in 15 minutes. Thank you so much.
We start for numbers 57 through 61, please, at the microphone. 57 through 61 to the microphone.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's the song.
Thank you.
Good to go? All right. Hi, my name is Dylan. I'm a resident in the Lower East Side of Manhattan. A quick side note, I would like to say that I think this project has borough-wide implications, and I've heard a few people say that if you're not from the area, you shouldn't be speaking. But I think, you know, being a Lower East Side resident, I think I'm eligible to speak on this topic. So I support the community-based approach that Silverstein has proposed, their commitment to build more housing, increase the safety and security of Midtown Manhattan, incorporate local restaurants and businesses, and also work alongside local organizations to further DEI initiatives is why I support the project. In addition to my support, over the past month, I've spoken to members of the community, business owners, and employees about the prospect of a casino in their neighborhood. I heard almost every response you can think of: people in support, people against, people who just didn't give a crap. What I heard most was that people wanted to be included in this project. Local businesses welcomed the idea of bringing more foot traffic over to 10th and 11th Avenue. And I heard residents speak on the safety implications of this casino happening, making it easier, you know, and better for their kids with schools and parks. I believe that this proposal includes the wishes of the local community and members and provides a unique experience for not only New Yorkers, but people who are visiting this great city. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Zachary Mattis, and I'm here today on behalf of local SEIU 32BJ in support of the proposed casino project. 32BJ is the largest property services union in the nation, representing 175 members, 175,000 members across 11 states and Washington DC. The 88,000 members of our New York City Property Services Division are the backbone of the city's commercial and residential buildings, stadiums, and airports, and more. 32BJ currently represents hundreds of commercial cleaners, security guards, and residential workers at properties owned by the applicant, Silverstein Properties, and have found them to be a responsible employer. Furthermore, we are confident that this project will significantly benefit our city's economy by generating employment opportunities, invigorating local businesses, and fostering community growth, and hope that you will view it favorably. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Midori Hosokawa. I live in the zip code 100336. I have no definitive answer, but I incline to say no because stereotype of an image of a casino is always associated with prostitution, runaway girls, and gangs, and all the negative illegal activities. However, it should be, I mean, try to be open-minded, and everything is a new opportunities. And then by hearing, by watching, I can, I can, later, I'm sorry, grandma's pictures and fantastic presentations, well, there may be fresh, very new, innovative ideas. And also by hearing, talking to people who came, who are here, only was a 12% casino business is only 12%, and then rest of the business, 88% is hotels and other things, and then housing also, I don't know. And if that's the case, I just wanted to ask questions. Are there any way proactive solution to conceivable or reasonable expected emerging negativity? I wonder, or their particular firm commitment? If there's such a thing, I'd like to know. If there is, I think I'm going to say possibly yes to it, but, excuse me. Oh, I don't, time is up. I wanted to talk more about that, but.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Dino, and thank you for allowing us to present this project. We'll believe with the fine future of New York West Side. I lived and worked in this area for 20 years now, and we don't have any good restaurants around here, first of all. All the restaurants are far from here, so that project's going to bring a lot of restaurants. It's going to be a lot of, like, 10 to 15, like, shops, like restaurants and other shops. Also, the project's going to bring, like, 5,000 union jobs, also construction, bring, like, construction workers, like, construction jobs, union jobs, and also the security would, like, be really around the building so it can secure the place. And also, this project's going to bring, like, thousands of apartments, and which 500 of them will be, like, affordable housing, which will help the neighborhood a lot. And, you know. Also, it's going to help the city in revenue, taxes, tax revenues, and, you know, all for the project. Thank you so much.
Can we get numbers 62 through 66 to the microphone, please? Calling number 62?
Thank you for this forum. We appreciate you. My name is Jeanette Lugo, and I'm the community chef and executive director of Agape Food Rescue and an active member of the NYPD Community Affairs Clergy Liaison Division, bridging the gap in daily service in the need of the East New York and Brownsville communities. I'm in support of this project, which is greatly needed, specifically their commitment to partnering with Rethink. The benefit of this proposal will bridge beyond the West Side. It will plant seeds of impact that will bloom in East New York, Brownsville, and all of the communities supported by Rethink. Rethink has continued to provide countless meals, supporting senior centers, shelters, after-school programs, and food distributing programs with dignity to all who they serve, with professionalism and accountability to excellence. This project with Rethink will broaden that impact by increasing meal distribution capacity across underserved New Yorkers, making a difference in people's lives one kindness at a time for all New Yorkers, which is what this project is about. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Shayna McCormick, and I'm the director for Food Access and Equity Program here in the city. I have partnered with Rethink Food for the past, who's a proposed community partner in this project for over the past five years, and I'm here to speak in strong support of the overall project, but also for their inclusion in the Avenir's mixed-use development proposal. Through our partnership with Rethink Food over the past five years, we've distributed over 700,000 meals to food and to cure members of our community. While there are other casino proposals before the city, the Avenir stands out as a true unicorn within the development world, conducting important studies addressing the many valid concerns that we've heard about today, such as traffic analyses, environmental and urban studies. This is a rare project that pairs large-scale economic growth with deeply rooted commitments to community benefit, small business support, and this local community, and also nonprofit collaboration. It's not about just building a casino and hotel, it's about building a lasting framework for community partnerships, something you almost never see at this scale. What excites me personally is the Avenir's plan to provide Rethink Food with space directly across from the street, directly across the street from the project site. This will allow them to expand their food access, recovery, and distribution network, integrating surplus food from the Avenir's restaurants and small businesses. I believe this Taste of New York concept and commercial kitchen could become a model for community-driven food innovation. This community benefit extends beyond the zip code via the services and resources proposed in this project. Thanks to the Avenir's vision, Silverstein Properties' vision, Rethink Food can continue to do what it has done since 2017: feed at-risk New Yorkers, support small businesses, and build community. I support this proposal for the economic and social benefits it can bring to Hell's Kitchen and the wider New York community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alyssa. I'm speaker number 66. I'm a team member with Rivers Casino and Resort in Schenectady. I've had amazing opportunities working with Rush Street Gaming, you know, and that's the reason why I wanted to, you know, make that roughly three-hour journey here from upstate to talk to you about my experiences and, you know, the potential experiences and opportunities that people in this community could have working with Rush Street Gaming. So I'm a manager of human resources. I have worked with Rush Street Gaming for about five years. I started at an entry-level HR coordinator position, and I was, you know, warmly welcomed as soon as I entered the company. I received mentorship and support, and I quickly was promoted to an HR generalist, a senior generalist, and now an HR manager. So I was also given the opportunity for tuition reimbursement, which helped me obtain a certificate in HR leadership, which I would not be here today without. And that is just one of the avenues and opportunities that Rush Street Gaming has for higher education opportunities. They also have a scholarship program and tuition assistance, so they, you know, greatly believe in, you know, their employees, their team members, you know, rising up. So, you know, I just want to kind of close it out. I can honestly say that I would not be here today without the leadership and support that I received from Rush Street Gaming and Rivers Casino, and I just believe the people in this community and in this neighborhood deserve that same opportunity. Thank you.
Is there numbers 64 and 65 out there that have not spoken yet? 64 and 65? All right. Can we get 67 through 71 to the microphone, please?
My name is James Gagnon. I'm a security officer here at Rivers Casino and Resorts Schenectady. I've been there for three years. Working at Rivers Casino has been much more than a job for me, it has been a journey of growth, community, and purpose. The core of what we do every day is our commitment to security both inside and outside the casino doors. Security at Rivers is its top priority, and I'm proud to be a part of that. We've all trained to be vigilant and ensure every single guest and employee can feel safe and content with constant patrols and quick response times. Rivers encourages us to build personal relationships with our customers. Over the years, I've gotten to know many of our regular guests, and connections have shown me that security just isn't about protection, it's about care. That philosophy has been put to the test on two occasions: one instance when a guest was choking, and my training kicked in, and I performed the Heimlich maneuver. And another guest had passed out from an overdose where I administered life-saving care, and I'm proud to have been there to save both their lives. These experiences, along with thousands of hours worked, here have helped me grow so much as a person. This job has taught me the true meaning of pride in my work. I've developed resilience, sharpened my instincts, and deepened my empathy. I've also known this company cares deeply about its employees and guests. I was honored to receive the Rivers Finest Signature Award in 2024, and I share that honor with everyone who works hard every day to make sure, make this such a safe and welcoming place. I'm proud of the work I do at Rivers, and I've learned lessons, I've touched lives, and I've been given opportunities. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jaquay Anderson. I also work at Schenectady Rivers. I started as a table games dealer, I switched to poker, and now I'm a slot attendant. I've been there a little over six years, and I'm able to have three different careers in just that amount of time. The gaming industry, though, is more than just a job, it's honestly, like, life-changing career, because it's like a trade. Something you have for life, and no one can ever take it away from you. I had great teachers along the way. One right here taught me everything I know about table games, gave me opportunity. Another one back there, he took a chance on me and made me a slot attendant, and I can't thank them enough. I think the success that Schenectady Rivers has had is because it's run like a family and not a business. I've known both these men multiple years. I can't say enough good things about them. Rivers, along with the union, also part of the union, which is a top tier, I've been a part of multiple unions, and this is the best one by far, they have every benefit you could think of: 401K, dental, health insurance, life insurance, scholarships, some stuff I couldn't even tell you that's in the paperwork that I don't even know about. They offer constant charitable works, volunteer work being offered. I just can't say enough. This, my mom had me when she was like 14, so I grew up kind of, you know, not in the best conditions. And this, I can honestly say this job changed my life. I was able to buy a home, one of the first people in my family to buy a home, and I'm just so thankful for Rivers. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Thank you.
My name is Eduardo Concepcion. I am the director of table games at Rivers Casino in Schenectady. I'm just here today to share with you guys and people like me how great this industry and this company has been to me and my family. I joined Rush Street Gaming back in 2017 as part of the opening team at Rivers Casino in upstate New York. Since then, I have been promoted four times, and now I lead a team of 280 table games professionals. I don't hold an MBA or any fancy title, but I do have a passion for table games and a huge support from Rush Street Gaming and the senior leadership team. And that's what I want people like me to know, that this industry and this company is great, and the stigma that the casino is bad and it brings bad people to the area, that is just a misconception. And if I may, I have a message for the Latin community. Este mensaje es para la comunidad latina. Creame que este casino y esta compañía son una gran oportunidad para todos nosotros. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is...
Hello, my name is Bree Casanova, and I'm proud to be a team member at Rivers Casino in Schenectady. I'm here today to share my experience working for Rush Street Gaming and to express how grateful I am for the opportunities I've had. I truly hope others in the community get the same chance I did, to grow and thrive in a supportive workplace. I love my job as a surveillance agent because it's given me a unique perspective on the casino industry. I've been with Rivers three years, and I am proud to say I'm a member of Hotel Gaming Trades Council. When I started in 2022, I was a stewardess. A year later, I moved into a role as security guard. That position taught me a lot: responsibility, awareness, and the importance of staying calm under pressure. Eventually, I was offered the chance to join the surveillance team. Surveillance is more than just watching cameras, it's about protecting integrity, building trust, and being part of something bigger than myself. Working for Rush Street Gaming has been an amazing journey, and I'm excited to keep growing within this company. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. I've heard a lot of positive comments about this Silverstein Group, and it's starting to make sense on why Rush Street and Rivers has partnered with the Silverstein Group. Seems like a lot of the same core values, and that's to share my experiences here today. My name is Kyle Bond. I'm the Assistant General Manager at Rivers Schenectady. I started with the company 15 years ago as a security officer, worked through supervisor, manager levels, moved into the gaming side, slot director, VP of Gaming, and now my current role. You know, the comments you heard before me from our other team members, that's why we do what we do. We try to lift people up, we try to build them as better people, how can they contribute to their community, to their families. And just looking on the business side, Rivers doesn't put a casino in and walk away. They figure out how to integrate themselves into the community, how can they work with not-for-profit communities, shelters, you know, we've seen it all. So putting a Rivers Casino with this Silverstein Group, it's just, again, like I said, it's all starting to make sense. So thanks for giving us time to speak today. Thank you.
Can we get 72 through 76 up to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for having me. To introduce myself, my name is Charlie, and I am in full support of the casino and the project here with the Avenir. And for full transparency, I live in New Jersey, but I work in the city, right down the street here in the Garment District 10018. And I wanted to speak on something that I experienced while I manage and run our office here for my company, two blocks away. Our company is headquartered in Chicago, in the River North District, and there is a casino in downtown River North, for those that have ever been there. And it has been a really special place for not only myself, who goes there every other week, basically, because I manage a team out there, but in that area, it has really cleaned up River North. I don't know if you guys know Chicago very well, but it was a very dangerous part of the city for the longest time. With the casino coming in a few years ago, it has really cleaned up that area of the city. It's dropped crime, burglary, and it's been a safe place for me to take my colleagues out to dinner. Unfortunately, we're getting deep-dish pizza there. I really like to get New York City slices, which is my favorite. But yeah, so it's been a great experience, and I firsthand see that literally every other week. And I also want to comment on this: I've been fortunate enough to work with the Silverstein Group for a while now over my years, and they've been extremely incredible to work with. They're obviously a family-run company. They treat me like family, and I'm simply just a vendor to them. And yeah, I know they'll bring that same sense of family, community, respect to this area, and I know I'm over time. But thank you all so much.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Alyssa Arguera. I am a Silverstein employee. Thank you for having me. Honestly, when I heard about this project, three points came to my mind: empowerment, participation. Strong communities start with a voice and choice. What does this mean to me? Engaging residents in shaping their future, believing that this inclusion fosters ownership and accountability, creating resistible progress in all involved in this potential. I mean, its potential is a win-win. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Building a social capital. Connection is a foundation of resilience. When I think about connection in any community, I think trust and collaboration strengthens bonds. Shared a resource and network of support are super meaningful in a project's development. Community thrives even in challenges. Nothing goes smoothly, but it's all worth it. Having the buy-in from your community will ultimately make this project strong and move it forward even when it might seem beyond challenging. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is John Mallow. My ZIP code is 10003, and I'm here to support the Avenir. I'm the CEO of GMHC, the world's first HIV/AIDS service organization, serving our city since 1982. GMHC works with thousands of New Yorkers living with HIV and AIDS, as well as those at high risk for infection and generally in need of care. Many people come to GMHC for services while struggling with housing or mental health, looking for work opportunities and/or facing food insecurity. We operate scaled programs in testing and prevention, housing, food and wellness, mental health, substance use, workforce development, and legal services. We also have a pharmacy on-site and offer access to PrEP medications. Our offices are located on 38th Street between 8th and 9th. We serve clients from across the city with services at that location and in the field. The Avenir's over $10 million commitment to fund our work will directly expand the services we provide across the agency. In the coming years, in response to the urgent needs of our clients, GMHC will seek to expand its growing scatter site housing portfolio to include congregate housing with co-located social services. The funds we will get from this project will strengthen and grow that work significantly. We're also committed to empowering our clients with training opportunities that will ensure their success if they receive jobs at the Avenir, so this partnership is about more than just money. GMHC believes this project will create meaningful opportunities for the people we serve. As the city grows and changes, our clients deserve to be included in that opportunity and prosperity. This would be one part of making sure that happens. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Aronella. I live in 10011 Chelsea. I moved to New York in 1998 from Atlanta, Georgia. I sing and play the trombone for a living. My first jobs as a professional musician were playing on the floating riverboat casinos in Biloxi in Natchez, Mississippi. And for me, as a young kid aspiring to be a musician, those were my first jobs, and they gave me a livelihood and a living. And when I moved to New York in 1998, I played in casinos in Atlantic City, and I was able to make a living doing that. A lot of us, you know, I'm a musician, but I also consider myself to be a hospitality worker, because we entertain people, we make people happy with what we do, and that's an important part of New York City. I feel like the idea of a casino is synonymous with the concept of culture. It's, from what I understand, 12% of the project is going to be the casino, the rest is going to be devoted to an art space, music venue, restaurants. It's going to create thousands of jobs for people in the hospitality restaurant and lowly trombone players like myself. I'm also the founder of the Jazz Age Lawn Party on Governor's Island. We've been doing that for 20 years now, and when I first began out there on Governor's Island, there was literally tumbleweed blowing around. And my event has put Governor's Island on the map, and we have thousands of people to come out there every summer for my event. And when I first caught wind of all of the developments taking place out there, you know, the spa and other fancy schmancy things, I was a little bit reticent, but arts and capitalism and business can actually function very beautifully together, and I feel like I'm attested into that, and I'm very much for this project.
Thanks for putting me after the professional performer. My name is Jackie Kelly. I'm the Deputy Executive Director for Development and External Relations at Hudson Guild. Hudson Guild is a multi-service, multi-generational community agency which provides a wide range of services and programs to meet the needs of our diverse community in Chelsea and the West Side of Manhattan. We offer early childhood education, older adult services, comprehensive youth programming, mental health counseling, employment support, supportive housing assistance, and arts and cultural programs, and we are committed to providing high-quality, affordable, and accessible services that help our neighbors achieve their full potential. Our program reaches about 16,000 people every year, and we were founded in 1895. As you know, Silverstein Properties and its partner, Avenir, have submitted a proposal to build and operate a gaming resort in our community. As a direct provider of social and human services centered on the fundamental needs and goals of our local participants, Hudson Guild does not take positions on matters of this kind, and we await the outcome of the robust community process regarding gaming in our area. If, however, as a result of this process, the Avenir proposal is selected, Hudson Guild would expect to develop a productive working relationship with them and to broaden the reach of our current services and add new programmatic goals to benefit our community. Avenir has, by agreement, agreed to significant recurring financial support for Hudson Guild's community programming with a focus on individual needs in Chelsea and Hell's Kitchen. Budget challenges, as you all obviously know, have increased the pressure on human service programming in our area, including education, food, and employment assistance, creating additional hardships for the people we serve. Hudson Guild would look forward to this critical investment by Avenir into our community. We hope the above information is helpful to your evaluation process.
Can we get numbers 77 through 85 to the microphone, please? 77 through 85.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Anthony Rubando. Thank you for the opportunity to talk here today. I've been a freelance graphic designer, web designer, multimedia designer for many, many years. I'm also a big photography geek, and I have photographed the city, the boroughs, for the last several decades. And one of the most impressive things I saw was after 9/11, the rebuilding that took place at the World Trade Center. The buildings are beautiful, they did a great job designing the site, and the site and the buildings are all meticulously maintained. I've had the good fortune to speak to many of the people responsible for building, or the rebuilding, I should say, and they all had very high praise for Silverstein Properties. I've also been around the city and have friends and family in the neighborhood, and I know that that site has been a bit of an eyesore for many, many years, since the Mercedes dealership went out many years ago, and it's just sitting there beckoning the city to do something with it. And I really think that the Avenir Project will bring a lot of opportunity to the neighborhood. We'll be able to see more art in the area, there'll be opportunities for the community to engage with the artists, there'll be an assortment of food, the food courts, the various entertainment options within the building itself, and I can't help thinking that it's got a little something for everybody. I can appreciate some of the people that have opposition to it, but I think ultimately, in the long run, it's going to be a really good addition to the city. Like I said, it just feels like that's an area that's been stuck, and as somebody who has photographed many different areas of the city, I just keep driving by that one and saying, "I wish they would do something with this." And I feel that this building, because it has so many facets to it, will really be a good fit and be of value to the community for all the jobs that it'll create, and just the opportunities for the local residents to be gainfully employed, I should say. And one other thing that slipped in my mind now, but I think overall, it's going to really be a benefit to the city. Thank you for the opportunity to talk.
My name is Vance Capani, 100018. I have a business on 8th Avenue and 39th Street, and I've been in the neighborhood for 10 years. And we have, you know, we're fully support the Avenir Project. We have a couple of key items that we think is important, and you know, one thing, I can't make fun of it, but location, location, location. I mean, this location is considered of the New York City environment. Only a New York native would be aware of this important feature. We're very cognizant of that. The location takes advantage of public and private transportation, and even has the New York Waterway Ferry, the helicopter, Port Authority, Penn Station nearby, big items that, you know, again, someone that lives here would appreciate that and how that can play into the whole design. It's like a destination area. You know, revitalizing that area is like what happened to the High Line, what happened to the whole West Side over there, that brings in new industry and new businesses and work. And we're looking forward to improving security in the area, because this abandoned lot right now is in need of improvement, and we're happy to have the revitalization coming into play. You can't say enough about Silverstein for providing the accelerated and well-built projects that they've done before down at the Trade Center, both before and after, how they've been part of the city the whole time, and fully supported all these different groups that you've heard here. So I fully support this project, and thank you very much.
Is there a number 79?
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Henry Love, and I serve as the Vice President of Public Policy and Strategy at Wynn. Wynn is the largest provider of shelter and supportive housing for families experiencing homelessness in New York City and the nation. Last year alone, we served nearly 12,400 people, including over 6,700 children, and helped almost 1,000 families move into homes. It is from this perspective, supporting families at the intersection of housing insecurity, workforce challenges, and economic uncertainty, that I speak in strong support of the Avenir Development. The project is expected to create 5,000 new union jobs, paying an average of $52 an hour. These are stable careers from security to hospitality to management accounting that can let families permanently out of poverty. At Wynn, we know that work is the cornerstone of family stability, and we're eager to partner so that those families we serve can access these opportunities. The Avenir will also generate $586 million in tax revenue in the first year, raising to $706 million by year 10, at a time when the federal government is proposing deep, deep cuts, a 44% reduction to HUD programs, including over $532 million for homeless assistance grants. This new revenue is not just welcome, it is essential in this moment. Finally, the economic context makes this urgent. The New York Times reported that in the first half of this year, the city added fewer than 1,000 private sector jobs, the slowest growth outside of a recession since 2003. In this moment of economic uncertainty, we need projects that anchor good jobs and steady revenue. The Avenir, rather, is more than a development, it's a lifeline for families, a stabilizer for the city budget, and a catalyst for renewal. On behalf of Wynn and the families that we serve, I respectfully urge you to support this proposal.
Ladies and gentlemen, hello. My name is Joe Woolhead. I was born and raised in Ireland, but have spent my adult life in New York as both a construction worker and a photographer. I was on the ground photographing the tragic events of 9/11, and at that time, I truly believed the city might never recover. It felt impossible to imagine Lower Manhattan vibrant again. But over the years, I've witnessed the World Trade Center site transform into something remarkable, a place that honors the past while giving new life to the neighborhood. That change showed me how resilient this city can be, and how the right vision can turn devastation into triumph. When I think about the Avenir, turn devastation into triumph. When I think about the Avenir, I see that same kind of possibility. The West Side feels overlooked and disconnected, but with thoughtful planning and investment, it can be reimagined, just like downtown was. The Avenir isn't only about entertainment, it's about bringing vitality, culture, and opportunity to an area that deserves it. For me, supporting this project means believing once again in New York's ability to keep evolving and to come back stronger than ever before. I urge you to support the Avenir and do what is right for this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Joseph Farahat. I am in the hospitality industry, lifelong New Yorker. I have seen New York since the 70s and what has been gone through. Anything that comes in with that many jobs is an absolute positive for New York. The amount of tax revenues, the amount of employees, full-time jobs, union jobs, definitely for it. As far as the community, I just, everyone else talked about the area, it is a very quiet, pretty much a dead zone. If this project continues, obviously, it's going to be an incredible iconic area that will keep New York in the forefront. Tourists are going to be coming in, people are going to be living there, it's just going to explode. I'd like to talk also about the Silverstein Company. They have a proven record, they are part of the soul of New York, they should definitely be the ones building this project. They've already proven themselves at the World Trade Centers. If anybody's in question, just go downtown and see, there's action and there's incredible amount of life downtown. Thank you.
How are you doing? My name is Mark Quest Johnson. I reside in 11236. I'm from Brooklyn, and I can only speak in as a person. I'm not connected to Silverstein, Silverstein per se, but I am connected to people that are connected to him. And those people give people opportunities like myself. Where I'm from, we don't have a lot of opportunities, and if we do have opportunities, they're bad opportunities. So when you have people that's giving good opportunities, I feel like it's a no-brainer, and we should support those people to give other people like myself opportunities. Like the other guy that was before me, he said the track record, I did some research on the Silverstein, and I did see the track record. And from everybody speaking here today, it's a lot of CEOs that's in the building that he did help. And as a person that has a lot of ideas, sometimes you just need to start, you know? And to hear that Silverstein started a lot of people and helped them develop to help other people, I feel like this really is a no-brainer, to be honest. And with that being said, I'm 100% for Silverstein. And I was 84, I'm 84, and I'm at 85, so Silverstein is bringing people together, you know what I mean?
We were kidding each other because he stepped ahead of me. That's fine. You know, it's not often you get a chance to talk about a major project like this one in New York City. So I'm really happy to be here. I came from 10308, that's the south end of Staten Island, so it's a long way away, but not that long that I didn't feel compelled to come here. Why? I'm a professional engineer, licensed professional engineer in eight states. I'm also a professional traffic engineer. I want to hear the details of this project. But let me talk about Larry first. Our paths crossed down at Ground Zero. Larry was with Westfield, I was with the Downtown Design Partnership, leading all the pedestrian analyses. It's no accident that that is a beautiful site, and it operates beautifully in terms of pedestrian flow, that's my thing. And why do I know that? Because Larry was instrumental in ensuring the Port Authority standards were followed. So I have no doubt that he will follow similar standards, which I'll talk about in a second, similar standards here in Midtown. I read Larry's book, I know what he went through, it was an amazing journey, and I'm glad our paths crossed just briefly. I want to talk a bit about my expertise, which is traffic engineering. I literally helped write the book in New York City, The Secret Tech Manual, the guidelines for all environmental studies conducted in New York City. I was responsible for two chapters of that, traffic and parking. I know the EIS, I spoke with Dino, I know the EIS has been done. It's not a willy-nilly document, it's a detailed document, and Silverstein is required to follow through on the mitigation, whatever that may be. And I'm sure it was detailed enough, because I know all the major players in terms of consultants are here in the city. So I want to allay those fears, which is why I'm also here backing this. Can I say 1,000%, but if Larry's involved with it, I know this is going to get done and done right. So.
Thank you, sir. Can we get 86 through 90 to the microphone, please? Speakers 86 through 90 to the microphone.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Damar. I reside from 10001. I work for River Place down the block on 42nd Street. Oh, sorry. Gotcha. Yes. I would like to give several reasons why I do think this new center would be a good idea and a prospect for everybody. The first thing would be marketing. We do have several areas that would benefit from having this place here. They could promote it, they can have different people coming in, and their business, their people can go from there to the new center and have some fun. The second thing definitely would be housing. Adding more housing around the area would be beautiful, because many people need a place to live and stay, and they need something affordable to go by. And having a center there with some protection would be wonderful, which leads me into jobs. We would have literally over 5,000 extra jobs added. I know several people that come to our building every day that want a job, that want an opportunity to strive and live. And I think it would be a good idea to have it right there and have something good for everybody to go around. The last and final thing, which is very important to me, is security. I was a security guard for four years at River Place, and I know sometimes it can get rough. So having a lot of different people walking around on the beat and watching helps children feel safer, it helps everyone else feel safer, and they can just walk around and enjoy themselves. In conclusion, I really do think this is a good idea to have everyone get together and enjoy ourselves and be as bright as New York can be. Thank you so much for your time.
Hi, my name is Mimi, and I'm in Zone 10036. Now, I'm not against the Silversteins, about whom I hear only good things, nor am I against project improvement. I grew up on the Upper West Side and wasn't allowed to come to this area. My father would have killed me. But I am now a 40-year tenant of Manhattan Plaza, which will be our neighbor, which turned, and I am a 40-year tenant of Manhattan Plaza, which has turned this horrific, dangerous neighborhood around, and that's made it so desirable that people are interested in now coming here. I am listening to people's, people mentioning their zones. Many, though not all, do not live in this neighborhood, my neighborhood, would they really want to have a casino as a neighbor and raise their children next to a casino? We already deal with deafening noise, I can't tell you, I'm like this half the time, trash, congestion, traffic, crime, all of which will surge with a casino. We already have wonderful restaurants and art in New York, so that's no answer. If we need improvement projects, build housing in this lot, that would be great. And there are plenty of things you can build in that lot that will be great, but not a casino. The residents in my neighborhood will not be your casino customers, Eastsiders will. So build your casino there on the East Side with all the advantages you described. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Richard Drutman, and currently live in East Harlem, 1029, but I've lived in various places in the city. And I wasn't, I don't have a prepared speech, I wasn't really prepared to really say anything, but just in listening to my fellow New Yorkers and hearing the emotion in their voice, and really, I have tremendous empathy for everyone that spoke here. And, but the thing is that I don't believe that fear and emotion belong in public planning and the future of the city. One of the things they talked about was, and again, I totally understand, but the idea of increased traffic and construction, but the thing is, whatever gets built there is going to have to undergo construction. So I don't see that as being a real legitimate concern, because something's got to get built there. Anything that goes there, there is going to be some increase of traffic. So while my, I'm empathetic towards what they're saying, I just haven't really heard a concern that, I mean, it's a concern to them, but it doesn't really seem to be rational arguments that are based on fear, they're based on emotion, and I just don't believe that that's how we plan cities. And, you know, the other thing is about, from my understanding, after 9/11, a lot of people did not want the Trade Center rebuilt. There was a lot of, again, fear and emotion around that. And my understanding is that even some of Mr. Silverstein's colleagues said, oh, it's too difficult to rebuild, maybe we should just walk away from it. But they didn't walk away, and look what we have there now. And I believe that, just wrapping up, if this project goes ahead, obviously, the casino is just a very small part of it, I don't believe that people are even going to feel the impact of the actual gambling part of it. I don't believe that children will actually see that part of it. There's just a lot of other elements that seems like there will be a benefit to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Zach. I'm from 10036. I'm not a millionaire, I don't know if that's not obvious, so I can't fund my vendors or have Rivers bring down a bus with their security guards down to speak on my behalf or the people of this area. I can't, you know, spend millions of dollars on homeless shelters that definitely need it, so that I can have all their people come and speak on my behalf. I'm a human being. I have two minutes to talk to you guys, just like a lot of people in this community, and this is the only power we have as people. And our country is in a very hard place, and we have to see how so much extraction of wealth from people who are downtrodden, who are hurt, who are dealing with an addiction like a casino or a gambling addiction, are just having their last dollars extracted from them by people who probably don't need it. And I've heard the jobs and the security and the great big building, and those are all great things. Let's build a great big building there. You know, 88% isn't going to be a casino. All right, let's make it 100. Why do we need jobs that are predicated on the extraction of wealth from people who are dealing with an addiction that's very personal for some people? It's very personal for me, but it's very personal for a lot of people. I don't think Larry and Lisa need that. I think they can make that money from a lot of different other places. And to make it predicated on something that is definitely just an extraction from people who are dealing with a lot of things, it's post-capitalist, it's not right for our society. I mean, haven't the laws of New York State enabling online gambling taken away from the few dollars left that, you know, many young men in America have? And now we have this next stage of just extracting the last few bucks that supposedly this downtrodden community is. We're a great community, we're not a dead zone, and we want it to be thriving. Build other things 100% for other things. We don't need a casino.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Cheryl Levkowitz. I live in New York City in ZIP Code 10022. I'm a lifelong New Yorker. I was born and raised here, first on West 78th Street and Broadway, and then on the East Side on 72nd Street. I went to college in New York, I got married in New York City, too, and also born and bred New Yorker. I raised my children in New York City, where they both still work and reside. My husband, who was a physician, went to medical school and did his training in New York, and he worked here until the day he died. Avenir means future. I haven't been in this neighborhood since Javits Center was the location to get COVID infections. This area has been built up immensely. The proposed plan is beautiful. It will bring hotels, jobs, restaurants, new life, tourism, revenue to this area. As I said, avenue is, Avenir is French, and it means future. New York must make steps towards the future. Silverstein has rebuilt downtown to more than it was. It is a vibrant, thriving area, and Avenir will make this neighborhood vibrant and thriving too. Thank you.
All right, can we get 91 through 95 to the microphone, please?
Hi, I'm Ahmed. I'm the Development Director at the 52nd Street Project. We're a community-based nonprofit in Hell's Kitchen. It's been around for 40 years, or over 40 years. We work with underserved young people in the neighborhood, we get them involved in theater and youth development. I was actually a part of the program as a kid. I grew up on 48th between 9th and 10th. Accessibility is key to our work, and so all of our programs are free, and all of our productions featuring work created by our young people are free. So if you have kids, bring them to a show, it'll be a fun time. Regarding the Avenir, my organization would like us to see the process continue, so all the casino bids can be considered on the same merits. There will be multiple steps for community participation and input. We feel it would be a mistake to terminate the proposal at this stage of the process. There's also the reality that the financial contributions from the casino are a once-in-generation opportunity for community organizations. If we miss the opportunity, there's nothing comparable that will generate revenue for our programming to this extent. Trump's budget is putting tremendous pressure on our organizations. We're one of the many, we are one of the many organizations that had funding withdrawn by the NEA, and funding across the board is being reduced or lost while we continue to see costs rise. Additionally, the job opportunities for our community are going to prove to be vital. The contributions the Avenir is making to our organizations and communities are now investments we need, not just want. We need to acknowledge the seriousness of the situation we are facing, and we are asking for your leadership to support the casino. Thank you.
Is there number 92?
Hi, I'm Steve Zichetti. I have worked and lived in New York City for well over 30 years and was here before the Times Square project took hold. And I can definitely tell you that with development comes progress and comes not only beautification of the city, but also tax revenue, and it just makes it a much better place to live, because I've lived through it. So a few notes I have jotted down. So I'm strongly in favor of the project, number one. Aside from the obvious, 5,000 jobs, tax revenue increase, community enhancements, new units in the area, it's a great location. Also, being, working in the city for so long, it's not along 5th Avenue, so we're not going to clog up center, the center of the city and cross down traffic. Great strategic logistic location with the tunnel, FedEx, the train station, so, you know, excellent as far as that's concerned. Aside from the new amenities and the potential new subway stop, which would be amazing, Silverstein, whom I've worked with for over a decade, is a tremendous organization. I can say firsthand, not only they are a marquee organization, they have revitalized downtown, the last speaker said it beautifully, they've made downtown better than it was before, and I've been here before and after. But they've got a pulse on the community, they've got a soul, they've got a heart. The leadership has a tremendous heart. They are so deeply embedded into New York, the community organizations, the homeless population, the culture, the arts, that this will only perpetuate even further. And as I mentioned before, the, if you want to revitalize an area, start with a great developer, with a great vision, and that perpetuates the greatness throughout the city. And I think that making the West Side in this area that's really a dead zone, turning that into an area that's prosperous, creates tax revenue, and jobs 5,000 or more is a tremendous thing. So I'm strongly in favor. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sam Lynetta. I've been living in New York City since 82. I came here when I was 18 and took position at the brand-new Intrepid Sea Air Space Museum, which is really the start of the revitalization of the West Side, especially the Midtown area. I remember the Upper West, the West Side Highway being torn down, the tearing down and rebuilding of the West Side Highway. the tearing down and rebuilding of the West Side Highway twice or three times until they finally got it right, fixed. I've watched this whole neighborhood grow and change. I think Avenir helps complete the work that was started way back in 82. You know, Javits wasn't even really here at that point. It's going to bring jobs, it's going to bring energy to an area that really doesn't have it because it was all industrial. And Silverstein has integrity. I've watched them do what they do. I've worked with them on occasion. And they believe in being people of their word. They support the arts. They do great work. As I said, I spent a lot of time in the 80s in this area, going to the clubs and everything like that. A lot of times you'd see a nightclub, people walk up to the door. You're regular in the club. You get in. You get people from out of town. They want to come in. They slip a little money to the doorman so they can get in. Those guys are the ones that usually cause more trouble. I've been bothered by the offer to Manhattan Plaza of that $22 million. That bothers me. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Checkpads, I represent Checkpads, a nonprofit created 20 years ago to reclaim our streets of this neighborhood from the Lincoln Tunnel traffic. And before I go any further, I want to say I'm really impressed by the tremendous respect for the casino rivers, for Silverstein, for all of these people. The fact that everybody's speaking like that is very impressive. My point here is about the location and the traffic. The access road to the Avenir is located on 41st Street and 11th Avenue, next to the West 40th Street entrance to the Lincoln Tunnel. Every day, there are about three lanes of traffic completely packed, which are blocking this entrance. And in order for customers to come in and out, is going to, car, taxi, and buses will have to cross three lanes of traffic. And if that sounds crazy to you, it is. It's, I don't know how it's going to work. And I have studied that corridor over and over again. I've worked with DOT, we are all working on it. It is a problem and we cannot just dance around it. Okay? So it will take essentially 15 to 20 minutes to access the casino. And if agents are posted at the intersection and the signal timing is changed to the benefit of the casino, then the queues on 11th Avenue are going to move from 47th Street to 50th Street. So it's no wonder the D I S carefully avoids that issue. Also, there is no space for buses, layover, pickup, drop-off. And there is no plan for a traffic enforcement plan in advance. And so I think, I think we have a major problem for the location.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Happy Wednesday. My name is Risa Totsiggi. Most people call me Boogie. I go, I am half a dynamic duo, Boogie Res. I'm a very proud New Yorker and very proud to be part of Silverstein Art Family. Silverstein gave us something artists rarely get in a city: time, space, and real support. And because of that, I have been able to grow as an artist while also giving back through workshops, murals, and community projects. For me, that is schooling. I have always learned for it when I was younger. Sorry. As a kid, I struggled so much expressing myself and connecting with others. Now I am eager, hungry, and can't wait to connect with others and to learn from each other, especially with those who are unseen and unheard. Everything we do with Silverstein is all about growth, building each other up and finding values in our community. We recently had the pleasure of giving a tour around the World Trade Campus and a little mini workshop in our studio space for the amazing kids at WIN. WIN Women in Need, an organization that provides safe housing and critical services to help homeless women and their children rebuild their lives and break a cycle of homelessness. And to see their faces light up, full of excitement, so eager to learn, that is everything. I have to be, sorry. To be part of their growth with Silverstein brings me such joy and heals my younger me. I am okay, we are okay, we're grand and greater together. The Avenir is the next step into that journey. It is a chance to keep weaving art and people together to share our works and experiences as living examples in hopes to impact, inspire, and empower others. Thank you.
We're calling numbers 96 to 101. 96 to 101, please.
It's just me? Are you not entertained? I'm ready? I'm ready. How you doing? My name is TC Weaver, artistically known as Res Ones, the other half of the dynamic duo known as Boogie Res. We've been a part of the Silverstein Art Family since 2016, artist-in-residence since 2019. In that time, my partner and myself have been able to, how do I say? I was brought up hard. You know, I was one of those people, you know, cast out by society, said I wasn't worth anything, that I wouldn't be anything. Being a part of the Silverstein family helped me to grow, helped me realize my worth. So a lot of people talk about the casino and traffic, you know, people not being from the area. I'm from this area. Everybody in here is from this area. And that's the thing Silverstein brings to the table. They bring heart. They've led by example, for as far as I know. You know, we've done workshops with people from as far away as Hawkins School in Ohio. They came to our studio for a workshop. Albany Middle School, Duchess County Bosse's. We've done workshops in Bellevue, Washington, the Boys and Girls Club. Everything we, everything, this whole thing is about bringing people together, community connections. And like I said, Silverstein has done that. He's led by example. So who, who, who not? Who's better than this guy to do it? You know what I mean? That's my time. That's it.
Good afternoon. My name is Shannon Bunter and my zip code is 1003. And I'm on the Advisory Board of Silver Art Projects, which is a nonprofit artist residency at World Trade Center. I say that most of the time developers are known for displacing artists from neighborhoods. But five years ago, Silverstein Properties looked at the 44,000 square foot of space on the 20th floor of 4 World Trade and said, this should be for artists. Because of that choice, Silver Art now provides free year-long studio space to dozens of emerging artists from all over the world. These are artists who otherwise could not afford studio space in downtown Manhattan. And they didn't do this because they had to. They did this because of their longstanding commitment to supporting art and culture across their developments. Our alumni are now showing in museums and gaining representation across the city and across the world. This is what happens when developers choose to be cultural partners and not just landlords. I also have a personal connection with the neighborhood. I lived at the Sky Building on 42nd Street. One of the reasons I actually chose to leave was, besides the area feeling a bit like a dead zone, I also felt there was a big lack of subway access. The Avenir, with its advocacy for a long-overdue 7 train, that can help change that, making this community more connected and more livable. What makes Silverstein different is that they run like a family, not a faceless developer. Their projects don't just transform a skyline. They invest in people, in artists, and in the neighborhood. I think the Avenir will carry that same spirit. And I think it'll carry belief that culture isn't just a decoration or an afterthought. It's part of the foundation. And because of that commitment to art and culture and running the business like a family, I'm in support of the project.
Gregory Allen Thornberry. I am the Director of aforementioned Silver Art Projects. We'll keep this pithy, poignant, and trenchant. Art is not a thing, it is a way. And the Avenir provides an opportunity for artists in this area to be seen and have their talent awarded and discovered. I heard Mayor Bloomberg say a couple of years ago at the launch of the Pearlman Performing Arts Center downtown, "New York is New York because of the arts." And we have an opportunity with this project to put the best foot forward for art in this area. And as we walked in today, we saw people getting ready for the Armory Show that will open next week. Those exhibitors, many of whom, most of whom are from New York City, would die and go to heaven to have the Avenir here. So their exhibitors and their guests and the collectors would have a decent hotel to stay in, in this area. I think it's very important to support the arts in New York City. Silverstein is at the vanguard of doing that. And at that Armory Show, a dozen of our alumni, who have now launched out into incredible moments in their art careers, are going to be in those floors upstairs, thanks to Silverstein Properties. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Gerald Owens, 10030. I am a resident at the aforementioned Silver Art Projects. My experience is 18 years state and federal prison. I'm what they used to call formally incarcerated, but now has been changed to justice impacted. When I first came home, I lived in the South for seven years and I tried to make my way back to New York and find a studio space, which is impossible. And then I heard about this amazing opportunity to be in Tower 4 World Trade Center, in community with other artists, and have a studio space that I don't have to pay for, which is super, super important when you're an emerging artist. So my function and the space that was created for me as a justice-impacted artist was to find more justice-impacted artists and involve them inside this space, whereas Larry could have just said, "Artist only." But he wanted to ensure that somebody like me wasn't othered by the system. It's already hard to come home and get a job and have a life. And for him to see that and to say, you know what? Let's make a space for these individuals inside an elite art space. We have, like Gregory just told you, we have artists that are going to be up and down the Armory. We have three or four artists right now that are showing there. We have artists that participated, that are justice-impacted, that are in the permanent collection of the Guggenheim. MoMA, you name it, we're all over. And I think that we can continue this art mission inside this new space in Chelsea, which has historically been, you know, art-centric. And I think that this will galvanize the community even more and we'll be able to take more of the community into the space in the bottom and have them participate in the arts in the space. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tony Ballard and I'm an Upper West Side resident, 10026. And I remember coming to New York in 1979. I crossed the George Washington Bridge with $10 in my pocket. And I was able to go on to do some incredible things in my life. Been incredibly blessed to pursue a career in the art world with my food connection. And those opportunities were often, looking back, given to me by some wonderful people. I've briefly, recently been involved with the people from Silverstein Group. And the only thing I can say, that everything that I get, receive as feedback from those people is positive. And I can't imagine them doing anything other than providing support for artists and other people. I'm really excited about my newest endeavors to paint. And I think also that the opportunity for music in this city and entertainment, it's just so many talented people that never get the chance to show what they can do. So I'm grateful very much for all the opportunities I've been given and hopefully we can pass that on to others. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get speakers 101 to 106 to the microphone, please? Calling numbers 101, 102.
Good afternoon. My name is Larry Lebers and I come to speak before you today in favor of the Silverstein Project Casino and other buildings. One thing that impresses me with the Silverstein people is that they have the ability to tackle a big job and to complete it. And you only have to look up anywhere around this neighborhood to see what they could do. As far as the location goes, many times when I travel, the convention center is next to. And there's some magnet, whether it's the hotel, the restaurants, casinos. And that's one thing our convention center is lacking. And if you're at the convention and you have a break, as an example, where are you supposed to go now? There's nowhere whereby this would accommodate that interest. The background of Silverstein, as everyone knows, is the west side. They live and work there. So I don't see how it could possibly go against them with the history of the family-owned business that they have. Manhattan is an active location, of course, and it's the center of the universe, center of the United States, and certainly the center of New York, so to put. A casino next to Shea Stadium, as an example, would be ridiculous compared to the opportunities that Midtown Manhattan has. Tourists typically come to Manhattan. They don't go to the outer boroughs unless it's to visit relatives. So with this site, you have it all prepared, as they say, shovel-ready to move. That is a miracle in New York City to begin with. The benefits to Broadway will be substantial because you'll have all these theater-goers coming to the casino, perhaps taking in a show, as many do already. But they're not thriving, the theaters, like they used to.
Thank you, sir. Your turn. Number 104?
Oh, you skipped your own. Okay. My apologies. That's okay. My apologies.
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Beatar. I work in zip code 10018. I am a New Yorker, born and bred, and I have lived and worked in New York my entire life. I currently am a lawyer and I work in the New York Times Building on 8th Avenue. When I was beginning to practice law, there were no law firms that ever, ever came west of probably 6th Avenue. And in the Times Building, for example, there were three very big law firms, one of which is mine, two of which are leaving. And a big reason for that is because 8th Avenue, which is not even 9th or 10th or 11th Avenue, in itself has become far more unpleasant to live and work in the post-COVID period. And that's not even getting to the fact that people don't have a reason to venture to 9th Avenue or 10th Avenue because there's nothing to do here. This is a dead zone. I'm supporting this project because I think it will make an improvement to the quality of the work-life of the people who work in these office buildings, who presently really are almost prisoners. are almost prisoners. Once they get there, they have nowhere to go, even if they would like to. We need a beautiful hotel in close proximity to the many offices on 8th Avenue. We need to have the revitalization of a food court and lots of restaurants, and people, people who are doing things, people who are enjoying themselves. I support this project and also believe that the Silverstein Properties is precisely the group that should do this. Their reputation is unmatched, they have been so successful in so many large projects, and I know that they have the appropriate commitment to New York City. So I do support this project, and I thank you for your time.
Calling number 104?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is George Kusia Po, originally from Ghana, West Africa. I came here in 1973 as a child. I've worked, I'm here to support the unions, everybody, all the union workers here. I've worked in a lot of Mr. Silverstein's projects. I've done Tower 1, Tower 7 when Pataki was in office, Tower 3, most of a lot of his projects I've been a part of. And he supports all the union workers, the men and women out here, he supports us. Where all the jobs that this is going to create, it's nothing new to me when it comes to Silverstein and its work. The greatest thing is, I'm not just here to support the union workers, which I am, but imagine all other jobs it's going to create, 5,000 jobs, jobs that people are sitting home. As you guys well know, after the pandemic, things got very, very rough in this city, where a lot of people just decided to move away, couldn't afford it. But with the jobs that's coming, 5,000 permanent jobs, our jobs as extortion workers, it comes and it goes. Okay, so we, you know, we go from different site to different site. But if you look at the broad aspect of it, it helps us and everybody else and the city with the taxes it's going to generate, a lot of other things projects can start, you know, with all the revenue this is going to generate. So I thank you guys, and I'm in very much support of this project. Have a nice afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Sam Kinabi. I am a tenant of the Silverstein Towers, and I'm here to speak in support of the project. One of the reasons why we're in support of this, and that's pertinent, is my wife is disabled. When we first moved to Silver Towers, we immediately went to the Silverstein management team about issues that we might have. It was immediately dealt with. Those accommodations were immediately made. The team quickly got it done. On top of that, the building has regular meetings with the police department and fire department to not only talk about what the status is of our area that we live in, but the differences between our area, as someone spoke about, after 11th Avenue and before. And you see it, because when you get to Silver Towers, it's like your own just little oasis of safety, right? More importantly, or equally important, what I like to say is, and why this is pertinent, is we believe that Silverstein looks to create community for its residents. It looks to create community wherever it is, in the block that it has. It looks to create a completely different environment. So while at first we were a bit iffy, my wife and I, once we spoke with the Silverstein management team, feel completely confident that if you bring in a team like Silverstein to do this project, they're going to do it right. They're going to make sure that they build something that's good for the community, that promotes safety for the community, and that is for everybody, not just for those who live here, but for the disabled, for those who are looking to be included, for those that are looking for work. Just in general, it will be better for this area. And so therefore, we're looking to promote and say yes to this project.
Thank you, everybody. At this time, the committee would like to take a brief break, as that was the end of the speakers that are here to speak today, but we wanted to give an opportunity in case anybody was coming in last minute. So we will put a hold on the hearing for now, and then, once we get a few more speakers, we can start back up again. The hearing does end at 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Three more speakers, so 107 through 109 to come to the microphone, please.
Hi, my name is Nan Dida and my zip code is 10025. And I'm here to show my support for the project. I love New York City and I would never want anything bad happening to it or to its ever-changing skyline. And I believe that this project is going to be a beautiful addition to one of the strongest skylines in the world. And not just to the skyline but also to the neighborhood. I'm looking forward to this, to the energy and life that this project is going to bring to the area. And honestly, just being able to walk down that street without constantly looking over my shoulders. For me, the Avenue is more than just a project. It is our one chance to turn a big empty hole into something that brings new life into the city. And when I think about that, I cannot help but think back after 9/11, when so many people's hopes were fading. Mr. Silverstein was helping to bring a neighborhood back to life. And I trust them with this neighborhood as well. I trust what they plan on doing is for the people and for the community. This isn't just a project, this is home to them. And I trust them with what they will bring to the city. And I just want to end by saying that as a young person, opportunities like this don't come often. And people talk about housing, but where do you, how do you get an apartment without a salary first? Thank you.
Speaker 108.
Hi. I'm from, my zip code is 07670, I'm from New Jersey. I'm from New Jersey and, but my son lives in Silver Towers. So I got familiar with the project because I visit him frequently. And the backstory quickly is he lived in Sky for a while and then he got an apartment at Silver Towers. And it's night and day as far as the quality of maintenance, of basically project maintenance and management of the building. So I have a lot of confidence. I've heard a lot of good things about Silverstein. And I'm very confident in just that if this is a Silverstein project, it's going to go very well. That I'm very, very strong, I'm very positive about this project being good. Besides that, I can tell you that I frequently, I frequent the area and I, whenever, I always dread leaving his apartment, going north to like Hudson Yards and things like that because of the areas. You know, you can see it's crying for development. And anyone could look at that and say this. I mean, people who visit the Javvis Center must think to themselves, what is wrong with this city? If this is the condition it's in in this area. So I see this project as a blessing, there's no question about it. And not to mention that I walk the area frequently at hours. And, you know, I feel relatively safe, but, you know, you can tell that that area is a little sketchy. You know, if you feel it, you feel you got to keep your eyes open. So the project, I think, would make a big improvement in that. But I do have a question, because I was here earlier to hear the presentation, which I thought was excellent. And I thought it really sold me on it, if it had already sold on it. But it did have a question about the traffic. And I personally know a little about the traffic because I'm around the city quite often. I walk it quite, I'm retired now, I come to the city quite often, I see my son often. I go to the theater and things like that, you know, museums and all that. And I noticed that the traffic is pretty bad. In fact, from his apartment, he could put like a traffic cam on his window and look at 11th Avenue going south. You know, it's just like, you know, sometimes at night the traffic is just...
Thank you, sir. Sorry, you're at time.
I'm sorry?
You're at time.
Two-minute time limit.
Two-minute time limit.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so the bottom line is, my question is quickly, is would the traffic patterns be changed? Like making 43rd exclusive to like buses and, and just shuttles in 44th? Because I think other than that, the traffic is going to be really difficult. And that's the one, that's my point.
Thank you so much. Calling number 109.
I'm Allison. I live in the Bronx. I did not know that much about... When we think about New York City, we think about tourism, of course. Most people fly to New York to go to Manhattan. The area that the Avenue is going to go in, it's, it's a prime location. From all the people that I talked to, although it was mostly positive and just a few negative, they were worried about things like traffic, as somebody did say. And most people are not flying into New York City and Manhattan to rent a car, right? They are taking the trains or walking around and, you know, sightseeing and going to local businesses and things like that. Overwhelmingly, the people that I talked to that were positives, positives, really just liked that they would get more, you know, people into their local business, help their livelihood. And I even had some people who really liked that there were going to be permanent union jobs that the Avenue would provide for New York City residents. Yeah, that, that's it. Thank you. Sorry, I was...
Okay, so now, as we have no more individuals wishing to speak, we will adjourn in this public hearing for the Avenue Community Advisory Committee. As mentioned, today's hearing was the first of two. The second public hearing will be on Monday, September 8th. Thank you very much for your participation in this process.